After that with a question.
Good evening, everybody. So this evening, um, both our chair and vice chair are absent. Um, so we're gonna need to make a motion and and vote on who will be the chair for this evening's meeting. Um, in order to do that, it's the majority of those who are present. Um, so if anybody would like to make a motion, um, we would entertain them.
I move that we um elect Mark McIntyre as our temporary chair for this evening. Uh, I don't know if we need a lot of discussion, but I have every faith that that Mark would do a great job. Chair in our meeting tonight. He has a lot of uh ideas about how to help us be efficient and effective. Um, and I would love to uh see how Mark runs a meeting as an experiment and just uh, you know, try it out. So um, I would be very much in support of Mark as our chair for this evening.
Evan, would you do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And the Mel.
Yes.
Awesome. Motion passes five zero.
Great. And then Mark, if you would start the meeting too.
All right. So uh, I'd like to call to order the August twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Planning Board Meeting of the City of Boulder. And um, uh, I'll just say thank you for the um. Uh, confidence that I can do this because you've expressed confidence that I I frankly don't have. Um, this is my first time chairing, even though I've been on, I was telling Vivian lots of different boards and commissions and working groups. This is my first time chairing one officially, so I'm nervous as hell. So anyway, that uh, having said that, um, I'll try to do uh, the best I can. And um, I just wanna make one other thing note. I had said in an email I was going to be making a motion to suspend the rules. I will not be doing that. Uh, possibly later if we need to, but I will not uh, be doing that. Um, we can check in at the end of the meeting at at around ten. And discuss all of that at, should we need to at that time. Um, and I have great respect for Sarah and Lisa and those that have done this job before. So uh, with that, I see Brad has his uh, has his hand up.
Yes, if I could just speak to a couple items before we get into the agenda, uh, these relate to the. Uh, agenda meeting that takes place weekly. Uh, none of you were part of that, of course, because our chair and vice chair attend those and help with that. Uh, on behalf of staff, we do want to ask that there be some um, level of commitment to either get to both items this evening. Or to not get to the second one. Uh, we discussed with the chair and vice chair a concern that is growing, that we're bringing staff on. For meetings, uh, they stick around for four hours and then they end up not presenting and it presents a second situation. Uh, there is no formal way for you to commit to doing that, other than if you were to prospectively continue the second item. Uh, today to a date certain. Um, the other option would be to commit to uh, suspending the rules and staying indefinitely. Um, we are hoping to avoid a scenario though where you decide. To hear the second item at, or or worse, to not hear the second item at nine thirty or ten. And again. Take up staff time. We are, we are finding ourselves in a bit of a uh. Franch in that regard and and just as the chief administrator of the department. Uh, I wanna be transparent in some of the challenges that's creating. So asking if there could maybe be a brief conversation about whether. You feel the scope is such uh, that the first item could be covered in short enough time that we could get to the second. Or not, so we could uh, request a continuance or in that regard. Uh, just hoping for some sort of commitment, although again, we understand it's not normally possible.
Laura?
Um, thank you, Brad. I think a lot of us share this concern. And uh, we are all struggling with with how to have more certainty around our agendas. Um, I can say for my part that I have confidence that we can complete these two items today, these two public hearing items today. I'm willing to stay late if need be. Um, and I I would hope that. A majority of the board would be willing to stay a reasonable amount of time late if necessary, but I think we can all uh. Commit in good faith to working towards completing both of these items by our uh stated agenda and time of ten thirty. Um, and we'll try to be succinct and efficient while still having a good conversation and doing good work and giving these items the attention that they need. That's my two cents.
Great, thanks Laura. Kurt?
Yeah, similarly, I hope that we can complete these in reasonable time. But I, despite being not a night person at all, I am committed to getting through them. At whatever time it happens, but hopefully it won't be terribly late.
Okay, thanks. I I can since, I need to say, simply say that I too will commit to uh, going. As long as necessary and uh, trying to be as efficient as possible.
Thank, thank you for that discussion, uh, board members. Uh, the last item I wanted to mention from a kind of a housekeeping administrative item is in regards to the. Scope uh, around either uh, our policy uh, items that are on agendas or on uh, individual cases. And just remind uh, the board members that if the scope of the. Uh, of what's being proposed for you is amended significantly um, by a motion to amend. That you would just keep in mind that those are items that we would then bring forward to council. For their determination on whether to uh, increase the scope of uh, the original application or proposal. Policy proposal. Um, you know, we would make sure to represent faithfully the board's recommendation, of course. Uh, but if the scope is significantly larger, it is, it is typical and we would recommend to them that they remand that back for additional. Outreach and uh, input in that regard. And uh, I can, we can kind of give you feedback as as those items come forward, both tonight and in future agendas as well. Um, just so that you're aware of that situation. Uh, but as an example, um, you know, if if the scope of the policy were. Later than we brought forward as part of the public outreach.
Brad, you're, you're, you're gone for some, you're kind of like, it's suddenly dropped out. Sorry. Uh, yeah, there you go back again.
Apologize. Um, so if the scope were significantly changed, as I was saying, we would feel an obligation to let the council know that that was not part of. Uh, what had been a part of the outreach. Uh, just by way of example, some of the council members raised the. Question of um. Uh, of whether, as part of the occupancy discussion, whether maybe three families should be considered. They brought this up in final reading. We said. That certainly is your prerogative, but please know that that had at no time been represented as part of our outreach. So we feel an obligation to let you know that that's probably a reason to not take action. And go ahead and take that kind of outreach. They didn't do that, of course. Uh, but that's an example where um, you know, adding a lot of uh amendments to a proposal. Uh, might be kind of a tipping purpose. And and again, I just uh, bring that up because that's been part of the discussion. Uh, administratively among the uh, agenda committee and just wanted to share that. I don't need to elaborate uh, particularly. I have the answered questions. I I certainly don't want to engender a long conversation around that. We can kind of address that if and when we get to that on individual cases.
Um, I I would simply say, Brad, thank you very much for that. And I think. Uh, we would all welcome uh, staff's. Um, guidance when we start to step. Outside of what you perceive as the scope and where it would create. Uh, uh, additional um, additional outreach, additional things. And so. However, the the item that we have before us later in the agenda is a, you know, it is a broad topic of. You know, our entire zoning for affordability, but be that as it may, we'll look for you guys to speak frankly. Uh, with us as as we uh, uh, as we progress through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, we will, of course, be happy to elaborate, maybe at the retreat and other areas. So that concludes my administrative comments for tonight. Thanks.
Kurt?
Uh, just to go back quickly to the previous issue, I'm a little concerned that we only heard from three. Board members who would not be sufficient to. To to take any action uh, tonight. And so I don't wanna put the others on the spot. But I think it is important that we hear how the others are feeling about continuing potentially. Later. Um, so I'm, I I'm just, yeah, I would love to hear from them if they felt comfortable doing that.
George? My opinion is we need to move forward. We got ten minutes already into the meeting. I suggest we keep going and see where we land.
I'm in agreement with that statement. Let's get this meeting going.
Okay, well, on that note, then um, I will uh, we've called the meeting to order. We have a quorum and it's time for public participation. And Vivian, would you um, lead us through any uh? Any preface to public participation?
Yes, Chair. Okay, so um, first of all, thank you everyone from the public for joining us this evening. We really appreciate um, taking your time to attend the planning board. And my colleague Devon will pull up the slides. Um, I'm Vivian. My role in the planning board meetings is to facilitate public engagement parts of these meetings, such as open comment. And public uh, hearings. And the rules I'm sharing are placed to help us achieve a balance between transparency with community members. And security that minimizes disruptions. So we'll start with open comments um, after I go through a couple of these slides. Um, and then there is a public hearing agenda. We want our participants to know that the city is really striving into a vision. Co-created by city staff and community for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. And that we work together with community to develop these expectations for meetings. When the vision is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue while also recognizing. We wanna make sure everyone who is participating feels safe and welcome. And we want to ensure we make space for different viewpoints in our meetings because we believe it leads to more informed decision making. Next slide. And we have a lot of information on the city's website about the productive atmospheres vision. Um, but I'm gonna focus on the rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder revised code that we need for the meeting. Um, these have some general guidelines that are advisory in nature. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business. We will not allow any participant to make threats or use any forms of intimidation against any person in this session. Obscenities, racial epithets and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting. Or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue is prohibited. And we also ask that participants identify themselves by the name they are commonly known by. Um, and so to please display your first and last name before speaking, so we can call on you. Next slide. From the Zoom webinar format, and this allows for participants from the public to speak at designated times. And we will not be turning on video for community members because of security comfort concerns in this Zoom platform. There's no pre-existing list for signing up to participate today during open comment or public hearing. So if you're in the meeting, we welcome you at the appropriate time to raise your virtual hand. And you can do this a couple of different ways. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see a horizontal menu with three clickable items. And if you click on the hand icon, it raises a hand next to your name and will know to call on you. And if you have an expanded menu, you can also get to the raise hand icon by clicking on reactions. And I see there are a few people participating by phone, and we wanna make sure this is inclusive as possible. Um, so if you're on your computer, you can use the shortcut Alt Y to raise your hand. But if you're connecting from your phone. Um, there's also a shortcut or command, and that's to dial star nine. And next to your phone number, a raised hand will appear. Um, and we can call on you. And if you are not sure how to change your name, you can also um, reach us through the Q and A function and provide us with your. With your name and we can change it for you. And the Q and A function is really meant um, to help with these kinds of process or technical issues. And not really for side chats or for sharing um, comments related to agenda items. Um, okay, so I think we can move to the open comment. So at this time, I would ask if any community members would wish to speak during open comment, to please raise your hand. Um, and just a reminder, this is the portion of the meeting where you can speak to items that are not on the agenda. So I see um, there are two hands. Start with Daniel Eisenman, and you have three minutes for open comment. Um. I think Daniel, Daniel actually just wanted to speak later and test out his mic. So we'll just move to Lynn Segal, and then you have three minutes.
Hey folks, here I am at the J C C at the Chamber Forum. Um, waiting for things to get started here. Um, it's interesting because on the way coming out here, I saw the largest. City, basically sprawl city, Waterview City, which y'all approved. Which should never have been approved, uh, four hundred some units. Anchored with a brew pub, which they will need because they will be driving everywhere. And believe me, it was not fun driving on my bike out here. Because I've got seventy mile an hour cars driving, you know, and I'm in the, in the shoulder. I know you're not planning board. I mean, I know you're not TAB, but you're intimately integrated with TAB. And every one of those units at Waterview has a garage, every single one. And they're gonna be driving every single place they go because they're in a desert. They're all by themselves. The perfect example of Jared's dream of a sprawl city. This is what we do not need in Boulder. Uh, God forbid, it's still in this, in the city lines, but it is the definition of the worst kind of sprawl. And I wanted to also tell you a little story, a couple stories, if I have time. But one of them is yesterday, going to the crab um. Capital Improvements funding um, tour of four sites. Um, the Civic Center, North Boulder Park, Violet Park upcoming. And um, the East Boulder Rec Center. Now, it looks like East Boulder Rec Center needs. Um, a fifty seven million dollar. Uh, getting, basically. It's eighty seven million if you scrape it. I hope that's an example to you of what you're doing with the approval of these scrape projects. Because that's a a good example of when not to scrape. Um, but in any case, they have, um, oh, for the Civic Center. Okay, they need eighteen million. How much do they have? Five hundred thousand, okay? We can't pay for this. So stop giving out these subsidies. Just say no. And cap CU's enrollment. This is just outrageous. Um, I was coming back from meeting in Denver. And coming through Central Park, there's a stabbing. Oh, we got him. It's all good, you know? Then I tried to go into the library to go to a Rotary meeting. I can't. It's lockdown. You know, there's. It it it's mayhem down there, you know? Stop the wealth disparity. Done.
Thank you, Lynn. I see another answer raised, so I think we can move on over to Chair.
Thank you, Vivian. Um, so we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. And I think we need to do this. Can we do this together, both together, or do we need to do one set of minutes at a time?
Usually we do them separate, just in case there were people absent or not at the previous meeting.
Then um, I'm I'm looking for a motion to approve the draft planning board minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Okay, we'll take a vote. Uh, Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yeah.
Kurt?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, now we'll move on to um. Uh, seeking a motion for the draft planning board minutes from July eighteenth, twenty twenty three that were amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Okay, Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, so we have unanimous approval on both sets of minutes. Um, now we move on to um. Uh, we have no uh, dispositions for or call-ups to discuss tonight. This is since this is a special meeting. Um, and we move on to uh, agenda item five A. Public hearing item. And um, that is a public hearing and consideration of a site review. For a hundred and twelve thousand six hundred square foot, two-story life sciences facility. At thirty-six seventy-five and thirty-eight twenty-five Walnut Street within the industrial IG's IG zoning district. The proposal includes modifications to building and fence height and a twenty-five percent vehicle parking reduction. And a request to amend the T VAP Transit Village Area Plan Transportation Connection Plan. The applicant has requested vested rights. This will be reviewed under case number L U R twenty twenty-two. Zip dash zero 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 four one. So we'll do a staff presentation for the first fifteen minutes, followed by an applicant presentation. The public hearing and then uh, board discussion and debate. So take her away, Shannon.
All right. Okay, can you all see my screen? Okay? Wonderful. All right. See if I can get it going here. Okay. On the side, great. Okay, so good evening, planning board members. I'm Shannon Muller with the City of Boulder Planning Department. Um, I'll provide a brief overview of this project, the planning process to date, surrounding context, summary of the project. And some key issues for discussion. Um, so planning board heard a concept plan proposal on this item back in April twenty twenty-two and provided helpful feedback. At the time, planning board discussed and chose not to send the item to the design advisory board. Due to the creative and well-developed design that was already apparent at the time of the concept plan. The proposal has been updated based on planning board's feedback. And the applicant will go through a detailed summary of those changes in their presentation. At the time, um, city council chose not to call up the item. Then the item went to the Transportation Advisory Board for a hearing related to the proposed amendment to the T VAP Transportation Connections Plan. Where TAB was supportive of the proposed amendment. Then the site review application that we're discussing tonight was filed on, in September twenty twenty-two. This item was originally scheduled for its planning board hearing on August fifteenth, but it was continued to tonight's hearing instead. Um, in the interim last week, planning board um, did hear um, the, did a public hearing on the T VAP uh. Amendments and did um, provide a motion to adopt those amendments last week. So as part of those amendments um, that the board voted on last week, the site is no longer impacted. By the Transit Village Area Plan Transportation Connections Plan. So that will make tonight's hearing slightly shorter. And simpler because we no longer have to include a reference to that in the motion and in the key issues. So I'll just make a note of that as we go along. But that is a slight update from the staff memo that was provided. Um, so tonight, the board is considering this site review, which is required uh, based on the size. And because modifications are being requested, including the proposed parking reduction and the height modification. So this proposal requires a decision by the planning board. Um, the site was posted and public notification was provided per code and no public comments were received on this item. Moving to the specific site and surrounding context, um, this is about a five acre property. It's located along Walnut Street, just a bit east of the Foothills Parkway Overpass and south of the BNSF Railway. There's an existing over one hundred thousand square foot warehouse building on the site that was constructed in nineteen sixty-seven. Um, the property is largely paved and is accessed via three curb cuts from Walnut Street. Um, the existing building includes multiple loading docks and surface parking area facing onto Walnut. Here you can see some context photos of buildings in the surrounding area. The building to the west at thirty-three thirty-three Walnut is the Google offices that are in approximately a hundred and fifty-eight. Thousand a square foot, three-story building on about eight acres. This building has received a height modification um, up to forty-six feet in height and also includes eleven-foot-high rooftop mechanical. To the south and east of this property are a mix of buildings, one to two stories in height. They have a variety of uses in those buildings and were constructed between the nineteen sixties through the nineteen eighties. To the north of this property across the BNSF Railway, there are two large industrial buildings, also with a mix of uses that were constructed in the nineteen sixties. So generally, this is an eclectic area. All the buildings range between one to three stories in height. And they're characterized by extensive surface parking lots. The site is impacted by the one hundred year floodplain of the Boulder Slough. Um, so the proposal is required to floodproof or elevate the lowest floor to at or above the flood protection elevation. This is important to note in regards to the proposed height modification. Where about five feet of the proposed height modification is due to the need to elevate this building out of the floodplain. In terms of the BVCP, this site is designated light industrial, so it's intended to serve light industrial uses. The property is zoned IG Industrial General, where a range of light industrial uses, including research and others, are supported. In terms of the transportation context, this site is required to provide improvements outlined in plans such as the low-stress walk-in bike network. That calls for a buffered bike lane along Walnut, which this project will provide. The site is not located immediately adjacent to any transit service, but there are some transit lines. Within a half mile of the site, along Thirtieth and Arapaho. Because of this, the proposal includes a TDM plan that includes elements to address these last mile connections. And we'll talk about those later in the presentation. This site is located in an area that does not have any adopted area plan or any design guidelines. It is near many other adopted area plans, um, including the new East Borla Sub-Community Plan that's just to the east. The BVRC is to the west and the Transit Village Area Plan is to the north. Um, but again, as part of the amendments that the board voted on last week, the site is no longer impacted by that Transit Village Area Plan. Transportation Connections Plan. Moving to the specific proposal tonight. Um, this is a proposed two-story life sciences facility with spaces developed for. Science and technology-based research and development companies. The site design locates this building towards the south and west areas of the site. Parking is located in eastern portion and the service yard is located at the north, facing onto the rail corridor. To locate those loading docks away from the primary facade. In terms of access, um, the existing site again has those three curb cuts along Walnut. And this proposal would reduce that to one with one century-located vehicle access point. Um, and place the loading and utility areas at the rear. It features a prominent entry plaza designed for pedestrian and bicycle access at the building entry. And the site circulation is further enhanced with a perimeter walking path at all the edges of the site. And again, it would provide those updates to Walnut Street, including the buffered bike lane, tree lawn and detached sidewalk. In terms of open space, this proposal um, provides well-designed open spaces for employees and guests on the site, where little to no space exists today. The open space design features that prominent entry plaza. There's an outdoor cafe patio surrounded by gardens. With interpretive signage, sculpture, an outdoor fitness area, the perimeter walking pass, rain garden and landscaped areas throughout. Overall, the proposal provides thirty-five percent of the site as usable open space, where a minimum of twenty percent is required. Because this proposal um, requests a vehicle parking reduction of twenty-five percent, the proposal has provided a TDM plan. To support alternate modes and provide last mile connections. Um, these are detailed in the staff memo, but generally include um, a mix of items, including eco-passes. An alternative transportation subsidy fund for employees that don't need a parking space. It provides a new B-cycle station that's prominently located along Walnut that would be accessible to um, employees and the public. And it provides, excuse me, an excess of short and long-term bicycle parking, more than was required by code. E-bike charging, bike repair stations, showers and locker rooms for employees, as well as those infrastructure improvements along Walnut. In terms of the building design, this proposal is a two-story building. Which features sloped roofs that are designed to conceal the substantial mechanical equipment that's necessary to serve. The proposed research and development uses. Um, throughout Boulder, right now, we are seeing um, a number of proposals, sometimes coming in as retrofit designs for research and development uses. This proposal um, provides an excellent way to screen those mechanical um, needs through the sloped roof design. Um, the building exterior features high-quality materials like dark brick, metal panel and wood look accents. With substantial glazing along the street facing and the entry facades. Um, it also provides permeability and. It also provides permeability and activity along Walnut. Via the outdoor cafe patio and a second level deck at either end of the building. In terms of the height modification that's proposed, this project is located again in IG zone. Because of the location of the property not near any residential properties. It's by right eligible to be built up to three stories in height and up to forty-five feet in height. The project is also eligible to request a height modification. And as outlined in the staff memo, either of these two criteria here result in it being eligible to make the request. In terms of the Planning Board making a decision on their request, staff recommends that the Planning Board. Look at the site review criteria and determine whether or not to grant the height modification request. Including specifically the criteria related to building design, such as these first three criteria here that I'll go through next. So again, there's a detailed write-up of these criteria in the staff memo, but generally staff reviewed the elements. Of the building design such as the height, mass scale, orientation, architecture and configuration. To see if it would be compatible with surrounding properties. Again, note, there is no area plan or design guidelines to guide this area, so thus it results in this eclectic mix of buildings in the area. The built form is largely driven by the IG zoning district standards. As well as by the type of uses that are proposed that dictate the necessary building form to serve the particular use that's proposed. In IG zoning district, this largely results in larger buildings on larger properties. Due to the floor area ratio standards. So similar to the property just to the west at thirty-three thirty-three Walnut, this property is a larger. In terms of the acres, which results in the property being able to support a larger amount of floor area on the site. The placement of this building toward the west end of the site allows for substantial setbacks from the property to the east of over two hundred and fifty feet. And it's also buffered from the properties to the north and south. Due to the adjacent BNSF and Walnut Street right-ofways. The design of the roof form also allows for it to be a reduced perceived massing due to that sloped roof form. And staff is also supportive of the roof form due to the eclectic, due to it adding to the eclectic nature of the buildings in the area. So overall, staff found that the proposed building placement and the overall design is compatible with and adds to that eclectic character of this area. Lastly, moving to the key issues for tonight, in the staff memo, there were two key issues identified by staff. Again, as part of the amendments that the board voted on just last week, the site is no longer impacted by. The TVAP Transportation Connections Plan, so I won't be discussing key issue number two. But we will talk next about just key issue number one, which was the consistency with the site review criteria. So again, for key issue one, staff did find the proposal is designed in a manner consistent with the site review criteria. Of the land use code and meets many of the policies of the BVCP, including supporting. The inclusion of. Space for light industrial uses in our light industrial areas. As noted earlier, staff did find the project is eligible to request the height modification and that it does meet the site review criteria. Relating to the building design. Staff did also find that we supported the proposed parking reduction. Which was supported by Planning Board back at the time of the concept plan. And is supported by the applicant's TDM plan that provides many efforts to improve those last mile connections. As outlined in that TDM plan attachment. So if that staff does recommend a motion to approve the site review application. I've just stricken the reference to the TVAP Transportation Connections Plan, since that was voted on last week. And I, sorry, and that is the end of my presentation and the applicant will have a presentation as well, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Shannon. So now's our time to. Ask clarifying questions of staff about the site review and. We'll get on with it. Kirk.
Hi, yeah, just one question that relates to the path that is shown. Proposed for along the railroad tracks. And it wasn't clear to me whether this was. What the status of that was, whether it was supposed to be inside the railroad right-ofway. Or not and so on, so if you could just clarify all that.
Yes, on our transportation plans, there is a proposed multi-u path that's depicted along the railroad right-ofway, as she's noted. That path is depicted actually in the railroad right-ofway, so it's not the responsibility of this property to construct that path. So we wouldn't be requiring or able to require that as part of this site review request.
If I could just follow up, so the 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 plan is specific enough, the mapping of the the path is specific enough that. It's clear that it's in the railroad right-ofway.
That's right, yeah, and I believe. At the time of the concept plan hearing, that was discussed by transportation staff and they made that determination, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And Belle.
Thank you, and thank you Shannon for your presentation, I just have one question and you know. We had our packet updated so many times, I'm hoping the numbers are still right, but I'm looking at page thirty. Of four sixty-six, it's a section diagram to the building. And my question is. So do you see that diagram?
Yes.
Okay, so the question is, um, can you explain on those mechanical? Let's call them loss for lack of a better. Those two areas that are called mechanical, they say for tenant expansion and base building. Can you explain what that means?
Yes, yeah, and I apologize, this this diagram that you're referencing might be a little bit confusing or misleading. But generally, that area of there is basically a mechanical. Sort of penthouse area with a catwalk to allow for tenants to be able to put their mechanical. Needs up in that high ceiling space and allow for flexibility for them to change out and have those. Those mechanical needs up in kind of that tall roof space. To serve the needs of the of the research and development users. It's not intended to be like a usable or occupiable space, it's really just to kind of access, access the mechanical.
Um, okay, so I'm hearing that, so what does base building mean? I hear that the tenant expansion has to do with that the tenants can expand their mechanical needs up into that space. And what is base building?
Yeah, I would probably defer to the applicant if there was like a specific term there meaning with base building.
So this isn't your diagram?
No, this is part of, I think I pulled this from the applicant's, possibly their written materials.
Okay, thank you, I will ask them, thank you Shannon.
Okay.
Laura.
Thank you, just a quick follow-up on that same diagram, it it looks like it depicts a flat roof, but those are peaked roofs, yes?
Yes, I think the way this diagram is cut through the building, it makes it. Appear as though there's like roofs and floors, but that's. Yeah, so that it's probably a confusing diagram. I probably could have tried to ask them for like a slightly updated diagram that would be a little more clear.
No worries, thanks for the clarification and and I also would like to thank you for your presentation, thank you Shannon.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we move to the applicant presentation? Okay, seeing none, great, we'll take the applicant presentation and then we can pepper them with questions.
Excellent, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep, just want to make sure Shannon from my team and Danica are on the meeting as well, so I don't see them on the screen yet. So there's Danica, all right.
What's the other person's name?
Danica Jones.
I don't see, sorry, Jones, did you say?
Shannon Jones, yes.
Shannon Jones, I don't see her on here, actually.
She was on the attendee list just a second ago.
There she is. All right, well, Shannon is gonna present something from her computer. So why don't we get started, so Shannon, whenever you're ready. Excellent, just set some things up, all right, well, let's get started, thank you very much, planning board members, appreciate you guys being here. On an extra meeting that was just for us and other topics, I know you had some retreat that you mentioned last week, so I appreciate you guys being here. Introducing myself, I'm Daniel Iseman, Director of Development for Conscience Bay Company. And I've been a resident of Boulder for twenty-two years, so anything that happens in this town is dear to my heart. And if you go to the next slide. So a little bit about about us here at Conscience Bay, we're Boulder-based, our offices are here in downtown, and we've been in business since two thousand and twelve. And we're a real estate investment and development and management firm. So we take projects driven from an urgency of climate change and we invest in properties in partnerships with a goal of cultivating healthy food. Healthy people in healthy places and we take this pretty serious in everything we do. Our portfolio is intentionally diverse, it ranges from offices, industrial, mixed-use, multifamily properties all along the front range. And we also have some working farms on the western slope. So we are a very giving company, we give with purpose. We do it through advocacy and grant-making and our goal is to cultivate healthy food and healthy people. In healthy places for generations to come. So we also serve in the Urban Land Institute, we teach at CU, we're a B-certified company, we are have board memberships at the Western Resource Advocate, so we we put our. Our time where our mouth is. So next slide. So I want to say that this is a pretty important project for us, it's here in Boulder, it's it matters. And this development replaces an inefficient industrial warehouse that currently sits on our site on. Basically, an asphalt parking. And it replaces us with a high-performing research and development building that will last a century at least. So Richweight Science and Tech is aiming to be Colorado's first net zero carbon and all-electric life sciences building, and that's a big task. There's no building like it in the state, it's the second or third in the country. So this is a hero piece, not just for us, but for the city of Boulder. So we're trying to do something that is iconic, we want to offer a world-class facility to support the scientific discovery. And we want to make sure that that we provide the the infrastructure for these tenants to succeed. In finding the medicines that will save humankind or will make our lives better, it's truly in function to that. And every aspect of this building is designed for that for that standpoint. So we created a very, very flexible framework that it's responsive to the future needs of multiple tenants. Hence the height and the need to accommodate a lot of the equipment that comes with this place like this. Also, it's a very flexible environment, very secure, very efficient, and it's also located within five minutes. Of the Boulder Junction Transit Station, so it's a TOD site for all intents and purposes. So I want to remind us that the this topology of building, it's unlike anything in the city of Boulder. There is another building that has been built like this in a very, very long time. With this much technology in it that could sustain the science that's going to happen within. And I also want to say that this building is beneficial to Boulder, it truly embodies the values of the community. And not only supporting the engine of scientific and technology discovered. But also raises the quality of design and place-making in 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 the city. So with that, I'm going to pass it to my colleague Danica to continue the presentation.
Hey there, good evening, it's Danica Powell with Trestle Strategy Group, thanks, I want to reiterate the gratitude that you created a special hearing for us tonight. As we start here on just the overall site plan, I want to recognize also Shannon did a great presentation, so we are going to try and not repeat. Some of the information that she shared. So just as we were visited with you on our concept plan, just showing some quick changes that we made to the project based on the feedback. That we got from Planning Board, staff and TAB. The parking spaces have been reduced slightly from two twenty-six to two twelve. We've increased our parking reduction to an inverse reaction. And we also increased our usable open space. Based on feedback we received and as we were able to refine the site plan and really drill down on how we were going to use the the spaces that weren't being utilized by parking and building. The building footprints remain largely the same and the total building area remained largely the same. We did decrease the building height based on that feedback. And brought that down a few feet to really tighten up the building envelope and the height on the site. So the height is, this is a unique height modification request, we, as Shannon mentioned, are falling within two. Of the criteria and considerations for height modifications that were in place when we applied, which was before the new site review criteria. The first is that it's an industrial use and the height is necessary for manufacturing, testing. Or other processor equipment, so you can see on the top-left image this catwalk. That would access this mechanical space that's shown in the gray area outlined in pink. We created a roof system to enclose that, typically you would see a lot of this mechanical on top of a flat roof. Accessed through ladders onto the roof with a penthouse. We also have a high floor-to-floor ratio, sixteen feet, four inches on the two floors, that's a much higher. Floor-to-floor than you would see on a retail or residential or even office building, that's to accommodate large things like aerospace parts. Engineering, large lab equipment, large. Vehicles that might need to move in and out of the building to, you know, move this equipment, think of Ball Aerospace. And how, you know, they do production in manufacturing inside the building. The next slide talks about the. The the pitch, so this is the second kind of consideration that we're able to ask for height modification. We created this roof pitch line that's two twelve or greater. And so we're meeting that criteria of the site review criteria. And this was really in response to a lot of feedback we've heard over the years about creating interesting roof forms and more. Interest in design excellence, and so you can see on the left this clean room. Which is what could happen on the second floor of the building and then you have the mechanical above, and I I know this is very technical, so I'm going to go through it quickly. And maybe we can come back to it, I know ML you had some questions and Laura about how these buildings actually function, they're very different than. Buildings that we're used to. You can also see the low point on the bottom in purple is where height is measured by, and then we're up five feet, eleven inches just from the start of the building to get to that floodplain elevation. Next slide. So in summary, we did reduce the height by over two feet. And created this pitched roof design, which was generally was well-received by Planning Board and staff. To really conceal this mechanical equipment, it was not referred to DAB. So we met the two criteria that allowed us to seek a height modification. In addition, there's a new criteria that has been added that we're not actually, is not available because we submitted before July first, but that's that floodplain. Elevation, so that five feet accommodation to allow buildings to be flood-proofed, next slide. So here we can see the mechanical screening views, we wanted to show how those mechanical, that traditional parapet with large mechanical units with a screened. Parapet is being concealed within the roof line, so you can see these different views, happy to come back to these and dive into further detail. But really trying to show you where the chillers and the mechanical equipment are are no longer visible. From the street and aren't even receiving screening in a traditional format of just a parapet, next slide. And these are other examples, that was a question that was raised, I think during our concept plan, is can you show us other examples of how roof lines. Have concealed mechanical equipment within them. And so these were two examples from CU and then, or all of them are actually from CU, they're much taller buildings, but you can see how those pitched roof lines. Were able to incorporate the mechanical within them. Next slide. So this is a summary of why we did it this way and why the height is, why the height modification is being requested. And I just, we wanted to also note that this is a more expensive solution to create this. Architectural envelopment of the mechanical equipment, but it's very important, as Daniel described, to create this architecturally interesting building. That is a direct result of the. Design outcomes that the design excellent initiative, I know many of us were involved with in the late. Early twenty twenty, twenty twenties to really create better site. in the late, early twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty's to really create better site review criteria to encourage better building design. And so this roof variation, architectural interest was in response to that criteria that was added at that point in time. Next slide. So just to compare, Shannon went through this as well. The parking spaces, what we have today, this is not conceptual, but this is actually what's on-site today. We have two-hundred-and-twelve spaces proposed, there's two-hundred-and-ten today. There's two EV charging spaces today, we're proposing eleven plus twenty-two EV-ready and twenty-two-capable. We're increasing, there's no bike parking there today, we're increasing that to twenty-four to meet code. There is no water quality or stormwater detention, that will be improved significantly. There is no open space, and the entire site is impermeable. The building footprint today is a hundred thousand square feet, we're reducing that footprint to fifty-six thousand square feet. And the total building area of the existing building proposed are very similar. There's about a two-thousand-square-foot increase in the new building.
Twelve thousand.
And we're doing two-story sorts of more consolidated building footprint and increasing significantly the onsite solar PV, removing the gas service to the property and going all-electric and reducing the curb cuts. And I believe, oh, this is our transportation demand management plan. We are providing a B-cycle location, bike parking, as I mentioned, shower and locker rooms, a parking reduction that's commensurate with the use and the location and access to transit. Eco-passes will be provided. We also will be doing an alternative transportation fund for those folks that decide not to bring a car to the site and use that for Lyft, Uber, ride-share, B-cycle membership. And then lots of coordination between the tenant and landlord and Boulder transportation connections. We've spoken to Commutify, and we're within a five-minute walk to the transit junction. Next slide. And I'll pass it off to Shannon, who is the architect on the project.
Yeah, move to Shannon.
Thank you, can you hear me now? Hi, I'm Shannon with Stantec. So thank you, Shannon Muller, for going over such a great presentation on the mobility and site connectivity. I'll just mention a few things as we walk through these diagrams. We are really pretty close to an underpass on both the east and west sides of your, of the site.
You're good, Shannon, we keep talking, I think the echo's gone. You made it.
We can't hear you now.
There's a B-cycle station located to the south of this, I hear that as well.
I think you need to mute on the Microsoft Teams.
Yep.
Try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, great. Very sorry about that, everybody. Okay, back to this, mobility and site connectivity. So we have a B-cycle location to the south of the site, really right up against the right-of-way, so it's easy to access and very public amenity. We have one curb cut, as Shannon mentioned, and that drive aisle gets you all the way back to the service area. So that is facing the railroad and not the public right-of-way. We also have two underpasses not too far away from our site, which is also a great way to make sure that we are connecting the site at that last mile. We have two-hundred-and-twelve parking spaces with eleven EV charging stations, those are located right here where my mouse is pointing. We also have visitor parking that's located right next to the main entrance of the building and conveniently also located next to the employee entrance where the indoor-protected bike parking is located. We also have a fenced yard in the back, so this is where all of the mechanical and ugly stuff happens, right? Your transformers, your backup generators, et cetera. And we are requesting a taller fence for that loading area in order to maintain, in order to maintain some views and really shield that from adjacent properties. We have some EV charging stations as well as ADA parking adjacent to the building and some expecting mothers and senior parking spaces located really close to the drop-off area, as well as a car-sharing space that will be visible and accessible for the public to use. Important to note here, we have local art to be curated by BMOCA that we're very excited about, and some other really great amenities to enhance the wellness of the people who use this building. In terms of our sustainability for the project, we are going for very energy-efficient systems and envelope as well as a number of solar panels that will help to offset the energy use of the building, as well as a net-zero strategy, geo-exchange system, and climate resilience. Something that we heard from concept plan was to really look at the entrance and make sure that it was visible to people on the right-of-way. And so in this view, you can see compared to concept plan, which is up here on the right, that we really pulled that entrance forward and made the slats much more visible so that you get a good entrance feature right from the public right-of-way, as well as a buffered bike lane, and again, that public art curated by BMOCA in the form of murals and sculptures on the exterior. This is that raised.
I'm just going to let you know, I'm going to give you an extra minute due to the sound.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very kind, Mark, thank you. So the drop-off and pedestrian crossing is raised here in this view is visible, along with some really lovely landscaping. We have some great site materials as well as architectural materials that Shannon mentioned earlier, and here are a few images to help support that. On the concept plan action that we also heard was a request to break up the walnut facade. And so what we did here is we created a nice glazed feature right in the middle of the block, as well as you can see that the cafe is really well activating that walnut street right-of-way. And where there were underground, where there were above-ground utilities, we've now buried those, and that's why you see this really nice green tree lawn right along the entrance there. And I have a quick video to share with everyone here that gives you a little bit more, a little bit better view of the entire project. And there you can see that walnut street facade has been broken up quite a bit for you. And here's a nice, nice view of the entrance, as if you're walking right up to it. And there you have it. Thank you, Mark, for the extra time.
All right, thank you.
I want to say, thank you very much, and we're here to respond to your questions as needed.
Okay. All right, well, thank you to the applicant for that tight presentation. We'll now open it up for questions from the board. ML.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, I guess there were three presenters from the clients, the applicants, thank you so much. I have a number of clarifying questions. So you reduced the parking by an additional five percent, and I'm curious, how did that extra land get programmed?
I can respond to that. It doesn't produce that direct translation. I guess it does, we did increase quite a bit of the open space. We went from twenty percent to thirty-five percent, actually. So we have quite a bit more open space.
Okay, so it's shown up in what was described as the open areas and gardens and all those public.
Yes.
Okay. So let me see, the question I asked the staff about that section, that mechanical area, and it being called out as, let me see, tenant, tenant expansion and base building, can you explain that?
Yeah, I want to maybe jump on this. I want to clarify that this is not leasable area and it will not be occupiable area ever. This is strictly designed to accommodate the amount of mechanical equipment that a tenant would require to do the science that is, that could happen in this building. They're very, very heavy on equipment, they require a lot of height, sometimes they bring vehicles, sometimes they need to hoist things up, so the height specifically supports all those uses. It is not habitable space, we are not getting more square footage rent out of that.
So, is this a spec building? Or do you have a tenant?
We don't have a tenant at the moment. The reason is, nobody takes you serious in the city of Boulder until you achieve entitlements from planning board. So we have been very careful not to market the building, but we believe that there's a tenant out there, or several tenants out there that are looking for this type of building.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is, if it's an unknown, an unknown what the mechanical requirements might or might not be for the tenant. The, it seems like they're, one of the bases for the added height, that mechanical space, has been for tenant use in mechanical need. So, am I understanding correctly, at this point, that's speculative?
It is and it's not, not for a big portion of the building, we already have identified a lot, quite a bit of equipment that's, that needs to go over there, close to forty percent. There's the other forty to fifty percent left open for the needs of the tenant. But just on the base building, it already occupies about forty percent of the space allocated in the.
You're talking about for the mechanical equipment, for the building to function?
Yep.
The building itself to function?
Yep, that is correct.
So one of the, I'm going to speak a little bit about the, you talk about this being a showcase of leading technology, sustainability and that sort of a thing. I see that you're going for an all-electric building. So I have a couple of questions around that. You have portable tanks proposed for the roof? I think if I, if I looked at the original way that those roofs work and all, a vast majority are facing north. Did I misread that, or is that correct? The way that, it's hard to tell, which I think the hips, Shannon, I guess you might know how that, those arrays are set up up there. I'm trying to just understand how, what these roofs are actually accomplishing. And I'm understanding what you're saying about the mechanical, I'm trying to see how they support the achieving an all-electric building or contributing to onsite.
Yeah, and let me clarify that, it's not only an all-electric building, but it's a net-zero-carbon building. So that is achieved via the solar panels, a geothermal field, which is a hundred-and-sixty feet, a hundred-and-sixty wells deep, that are three-hundred feet deep, that exists throughout the parking lot, and a very, a very energy-efficient envelope, unlike triple-glazing kind of things, some incredible chill beam systems, air quality control, triple-glazing, which I've mentioned, highly insulative. So if you go back to the, yeah, maybe one of those that shows the panels, the majority of the, of the eaves face south, some of them are facing north. So obviously, the south-facing panels generate a lot more electricity, they're a lot more efficient. And Shannon, you might know the number of efficiency facing north. Obviously, we get some reduced efficiency, but we're still committing to it and we need them. So, but we are still getting quite a bit of energy out of them in the north side.
Yeah, that's correct. There's some reduced efficiency, I don't know exactly what that percentage is, but we do still get quite a bit of energy out of those.
And the north-facing house?
Yeah.
Yep, because we're only, the slope of the roof isn't great enough to totally shade those that are facing north.
What is the slope of those roofs?
Shannon, I'm going to move it up to you.
We're about two to twelve, I can't quote the exact number, I apologize for that.
Oh, so the reference you pointed out to in going for a height modification, was that it was greater than two and twelve?
Correct, yep, we are greater than two to twelve.
But, but, so it's around two and twelve, it's not significantly. One of the precedents you pointed, you had on your, in your packet, showed a pretty extremely pitched roofs in there. So that is not in this, in the packet we got, we didn't get this package, but the packet that, anyway. One of the precedents you showed, showed an extremely steep roof, and I'm hearing you saying, no, you're not doing extremely steep roofs, you're doing around two and twelve. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. What you see in the perspectives is, or the sections, is the pitch that we're using. I believe there was an example in the packet of another project that achieved similar, similar, if you keep going down, Shannon.
Yeah, it'd be great to see a section two pitch, I didn't see one.
Sure. We actually did have one on the presentation, so let's.
Go show that instead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the pitch of the roof.
And this is one that does not have the sheltering, the mechanical in between them? This is just a continuous from one end of the building to the other, is that what I'm seeing here?
Essentially.
Well, go ahead.
I don't know if I understood your question. So what you're seeing in the foreground here, this gray-shaded area is cut through the pitched roof, which is shielding the mechanical from first-person perspective, as if you were standing on the street. What you're seeing beyond is the flat roof mechanical well, where there will, that's totally open to above. If we look at this next section here, this is the opposite direction from the previous section that we just showed. So this is cutting parallel to the pitch of the roof, and that's why you can see this exterior mechanical well that's on the roof level, that's totally open to the air above it. And in this image, once again, you can sort of see some of that happening beyond.
Those tall, they look like basery chimneys that you've got your little hand on right there, how tall is that?
Those are less than sixteen feet above the mechanical appurtenance height allowance.
So what is their height?
They're about sixteen feet tall, is what I'm trying to say.
From grave?
Oh, no, from, from the roof height here.
So they're sixteen feet above thirty-eight-seven.
So fifty-something?
So fifty-four-seven, roughly.
Okay, so just to recap briefly, I'm understanding.
Wait, that doesn't, that doesn't sound right.
No, Daniel, it's, it's about sixteen feet. These, the top of these chimneys right here is about sixteen feet taller than fifty-two-eleven, so we're fifty-three feet plus sixteen. And that's within our appurtenance allowance.
About sixty-nine feet?
That's correct.
How often do those chimneys occur? I don't remember seeing them on the plan, maybe they are on the plan.
There are two of them. And you can see them pretty well from the walnut street view here. There's one here and one here.
Do any of your edges come to the exterior of the building?
No, they do not. They're all contained within that mechanical well space, as you can kind of see within this section cut here.
And so why do we have some of the, if you've got this big loft for mechanical and you've got the idea of this kind of channel between the lofts for mechanical, why do we need these big chimneys in addition to all of this additional mechanical accommodation?
Sure, so the mechanical unit is located here, and we are exhausting air after it's been used within the building up and out of this sixteen-foot-tall chimney. So this is really an exhaust, and we want to have a certain distance from the air intake where we're taking in fresh air for where, compared to where we are putting out the air, which is cleaned through HIPAA cleaners, HIPAA filters, et cetera.
So I think you had said, Daniel, that forty percent of the mechanical requirement for this building is for the actual functionality of this building?
That is correct, plus we are adding some equipment so that it's ready for one of the tenants to come in. So, but it could be, it could be that one of the tenants, or it might most likely will be that one of the tenants will have to bring in their own equipment, use the additional height to hoist things up. So if you look at, or just for their cabling. Uh, so if you look at the orb just uh for their cabling and uh liquids that go, sort of all the plumbing that goes, similar to what's shown on this image right here on the left, the amount of exhaust, the amount of uh MEP equipment that goes uh on this building is unlike any other building, uh you know, it's kind of.
So hi- hypothetically, um, if you weren't to have those enclosed mechanical loft, would the exterior situation accommodate what you are anticipating in the speculative nature to be the future needs?
Um. Short answer is, we would end up accommodating the equipment similar to what Sharon Muller said, that a lot of reconversion space is adding a lot of equipment to uh to the roofs and then a lot of uh mechanical uh screening around them, so there would be a lot of patching of mechanical screening around in order to accommodate all this.
So the design problem would be a different problem to solve, instead of having it be a continuation of the building, it would be a matter of designing an element that is the mechanical screening to be architecturally um delightful. It'd just be a different problem.
It would be a different problem, I believe that what we're doing is delightful, uh cuz it is integrated into the architecture, into the pitch roofs, which is uh part of uh, part of the design, we've heard from staff and from a lot of people in the cities since we applied for the project that uh the jagged edge roof and the integration of these elements as mechanical screen is a better pro- provides a better architectural um um solution than a flat building with mechanical screens, which is not that uncommon that we see all around town. It produces a very flat building essentially. So we, we, this is costing us, by the way, this is costing us a lot more money to make it this way, but we believe that this is a much better architectural solution.
Um, okay, I think that I have got um my base questions answered, and I will let the rest of my board have a chance here, thank you so much, I appreciate your answers.
Okay, thank you, Emma, and thanks to the applicant. Um, ready for other board members to ask questions of the applicant? Uh, Laura?
Thank you, I just have a quick one, I think. Um, I'm interested in this question of vested rights, and I'm looking at your form here that says you're requesting vested rights for the parking reduction, height modification, building footprint location, the floor area for the building, the building square footage, the setbacks and the building architecture, if I'm understanding this correctly. Um, I've been on planning board for a year and I'm sorry about my ignorance, but I haven't seen this before, so could you explain to me why you are requesting vested rights for these elements of your site review?
Certainly, uh we spent uh basically since January two thousand twenty-two, we're sort of seventeen months into this process, or eighteen months uh uh into this process. And uh a lot of effort and a lot of money has gone into it from the staff, uh from our standpoint and from the city's resources as well. Uh, by the time we start construction, uh we hope that we can find a tenant. We also hope that the economy will be strong enough and we can find the financing necessarily for this to happen. Sometimes things don't occur uh as planned, so the vested rights allows us a little bit of breathing room in order to make this project happen as as designed and as planned.
Okay, thank you, and could I ask staff to elaborate on that? Um, and again, I am sorry for my ignorance, and I tried looking into the code and I I'm not sure I entirely understand what creating these vested rights means and why that would be a good thing for the applicant and what it might imply for the city, so uh Laurel, you have your hand up, I would love to hear your take on what it means to the city to have these be vested rights instead of just not being vested.
Um, Chair, did you have something to say before I speak?
Just wanted to say that I am very grateful for Laura's questions because I am just as ignorant, so please carry on, this is very, very informative to me.
Absolutely, yes, I'm, and this is Laura Whit with the City Attorney's Office, I don't think I introduced myself earlier, so apologies, Laura Whit for the record. Um, so vested rights, when an applicant goes through an application process with the city, once they're given the approval authority, they have three years of rights to build their property. Um, and under those three years, and this has to do with some like statutory law and things like that, under those three years, they get that opportunity to create their building and build their structure, so what the applicant is asking here is for a little bit more time for those approvals, and and you listened um perfectly earlier what he's looking for, but, or what the applicant's looking for. But it allows them to have a little bit more time to finish their development under their approvals. If they weren't able to finish it in three years and they didn't get vested rights, that means that they could be subject to whatever code changes we have or whatever other changes we have, it could cause problems down the road. So vested rights um are generally three years unless they ask for more. If they do ask for more, then we have to have a hearing. Um, and in this case, since there was already going to be hearing for the site review process, um the applicant went ahead and asked for um a little bit longer for vested rights. And there's a certain amount of time, it's it's a little bit longer than it has to be approved by City Council as well, so um that's the process of how that works.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that last part, how much longer do they get beyond the normal three years?
It depends on how much they ask for, um I think it should be uh, you know, it says they have not, um usually it's in the vested rights form, it says how long they're asking for.
Okay, I did not see that.
I think it's the same amount of time, I can try and answer this, having been um through this many, many times, so the site review vests the project as approved, if it's approved. The vested rights is a state statute that also vests the, the development in case there was something else that happened, like a moratorium or the zoning changed or something else happened that was, that could conflict with the site review. But the time periods are exactly the same, and there, it's, I think the performance is the same. It's just that the city of Boulder, through our site review process, vest in that approval where the state has a different vesting process, that every applicant gets to choose a box, I want to vest or not vest, and it's always a debate, what should we vest or not vest, and it's actually quite confusing. Um, but I think it, it procures the same amount of rights that the site review approval would as well.
Uh, Laurel, did you wanna?
Yeah, just to go off of that, um my apologies, so the, they're asking for vested rights for up to three years, so three years is the statutory requirement, if they want to go beyond three years, that's when they have to have City Council approval. So they want to do longer than that.
So, so he- here tonight, they're just basically saying the, the stuff that's in place right now, the code that applies to the project today, we want that to last for three years. And if, if anything, the city changes, should not change our approval for three years.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's very clarifying, I appreciate that.
Laura, thank you for that, it's very clarifying for me. Any uh, anyone else have questions for the applicant, George?
Yeah, um could you, could you throw that um, the last screen up that you had, it was uh facing the front of the building? A quick question on that, so it's interesting, I, I don't, I don't know if I'm reading it correctly in the plans, but looking into that second floor window, that looks like a vaulted ceiling space. But isn't that part of the mechanical uh area?
That is part of the mechanical area, and in some cases where the, there is no need for mechanical, that's probably gonna get filled with exhausts and some other things, but there could be places where you had a, get a double height ceiling. There is no doubt about it.
Okay, so is the rendering that we're looking at correct, or is it, or is that gonna be a flat, I mean, it looks very elegant. But it reads differently on the, uh on what you just said versus what is actually uh displayed on the rendering.
I cannot control what the tenant does within that space, if the tenant wants to do science in that space and needs the equipment, uh then that's uh, that's, they would probably have a false ceiling or they would have all sorts of equipment running through it, so this depicts uh probably something a little more gracious than what could happen, but I can't control what the tenant does. It could be that, that, that it's all lapped throughout this whole thing and the, and uh, you know, it's happening uh i- in every part of this project.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's good for our clarity, it would just help, you know, in in rendering like this, uh and and I, I kind of point back to staff. This is the type of thing where this is a uh, that, that image is a spell versus reality. And I, I'm actually, I, I'm thrilled with this project, I, I, I think it's awesome, but I, I would just, I'd like us to really understand, you know, what's going on, and it, this is contrary to what's being proposed in the building. Um, so that, that's.
Completely understand, and I want to show another image uh to respond to you, George. Uh, why don't you show a few of the other images, so they understand the potential reality, the things that I don't control in this building? So, go back, yeah, even this image, go to any one of the perspectives. Uh, look at, for example, the top right, if you don't mind zooming in. This is most likely what would end up happening, where we're gonna have spandrel glass over there and all the equipment is gonna happen there. So, like I said, George, I can't control if the tenant's gonna have lap space, or there could be a section there, it's gonna stay open. But for the most part, this is what I foresee happening in the, in this building.
Got it, yeah, and and I, and I appreciate that, thanks, thanks, that, that's, that's helpful to understand, and I, I totally get it. Um, I, I guess my comments more to staff and just kind of focusing in on stuff like that when it's presented to us and the public. Um, I'd, I'd like, you know, more reality displayed than, than, than what um may be possible, but not real, not, not realistically. Um, uh, on that same image that we saw, which was the front uh image, you have that cafe that's fronting the um area, I think I know the answer to the question, but I'll ask it anyways. Uh, is that cafe, because it's fronting the street, uh it appears to be open to the public, is that intended to be open to the public? Or is that uh only for the use of this building and will it be available at all to the public?
It's completely tenant-dependent, again, if a tenant wants to open it to the public and they want to have a public cafe in, in service to to the area, uh we could do it, uh but, yeah, like I said, it's completely tenant-dependent. And our intent was to put people on a pedestal at the entrance of the building, animate the street, uh et cetera.
Understood, thank you, um and then um one, one question, and uh we can, we can I, I, this is probably not the necessary place to, to bring this up, but these B-cycle stations, um you know, this building's gonna be built, uh let's say it takes five years to actually, you know, open the doors here. I guess the question is, with dockless systems and things like that, um how how realistic are these things in the near future as something that is needed and requested? And that's not really a question for the applicant, I just kind of want to pin that as a, as a question to the city, uh to understand sort of the long-term view of these things, um cuz they seem to be disappearing in other cities. Um, so anyways, uh but, but uh those were all my clarifying questions, thank you.
Thanks, George. Um. I know you didn't ask me the question, George, but I'll just say that B-cycle with their, even though it is docked, it, the, the electrics, they are, they are going crazy and having great success at the moment, anyway. Uh, Kurt?
Yeah, just one question, it's, it's about the street frontage, if you keep this image up. My understanding is that the parking strip there on, between the, the street and sidewalk can't have trees because there are underground utilities, but then it sounded from your presentation like you were undergrounding the utilities. Are both of those correct?
Yeah, one of the requirements uh from the city is for us to underground the existing utilities. When you underground those utilities, there's some setbacks that you need to comply with, uh which doesn't allow you to put trees uh in some vicinity, I don't remember the number. In response to that, we put the street, the trees and our properties on the setback to make sure that at least we have uh some tree canopy coverage in this area.
Okay, and if staff could follow up, is that a hard and fast city requirement, or was that just sort of a we'd like to request this kind of a thing?
Yeah, we would always require undergrounding of utility lines for, for redevelopment of this sort, that's right.
And, and we have our civil, they're just haven't been promoted, um I think Cody or Sharon from JVA could answer this, it's a, it's a pretty technical question, if you wanted to bring them in, they could answer your question, Kurt.
Thank you, but yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied for now.
Okay. All right, thank you, well, they're here if you need them.
Okay, um. I'm, don't want to cut this off, but unless uh unless we have more questions from the board, um I'm gonna suggest that we move to the uh public hearing and uh try to keep on schedule here, so um Vivian, um well, first of all, i- i- am I correct? No one else has any questions, if you do, raise your hand now, please, okay. Uh, let's go ahead and go to the public hearing, and uh Vivian, can you check our uh participant list and see if anyone wants to speak?
Sure, I don't see any hands, so if you're joining us from the public and you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand and we can call on you. Um, and Daniel, if you could just take down the slides for now. Thank you. Okay, seems like there is nobody from the public who would like to speak for now, over to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, okay, so we've concluded the presentations and the public hearing. Uh, and now it comes back to the board, and before we begin, uh I want to do two things. Um, I had intended, uh and in recent times, we had not done this, but uh for site reviews and use reviews, uh I believe we are supposed to ask, ask if anyone has any ex parte communications that they need to tell us about, and uh if anyone has any conflict of interest that they need to tell us about, so. And I'll take silence as a, as a no, there are none, but if you have any, raise your hand and tell us all about it. Okay, I don't see any, um. Now it come, yes?
I don't know, on linework board, we consider this an ex parte contact. I toured the site a couple of times, uh but I have no other conflicts and no other ex parte contacts.
And you know what, it's funny, uh that, that whole, I visited the site was something I said, hey, that's I, I didn't think that was necessary due to balls, it would be ex- expected of, of planning board members to at least cruise by in one form or another, Laurel, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, I was gonna ask uh Kurt just to make sure that he feels like he could still be um unbiased and impartial and in his decision-making authority, if you could say yes or no for the record, that would be really helpful.
Yes.
Um, and uh just to follow up with that, um if you are on verge of thinking whether or not it should be an ex parte contact, it's always better to disclose that for the record, better to say it on the record. Um, so if that's something that um Kurt feels comfortable with doing and and you all feel comfortable talking about any sort of visits, then, then yes, we would encourage that for the record, so that um everybody who knows, who can see this on the record knows what everybody has seen and been involved with, and it looks like George has.
But Laurel, Laurel, to, to Mark's, to Mark's quick question, if you're visiting a site and not making contact with people on the site or the developer, anybody involved, is that, is that viewed as ex parte at all?
Um, I think it sounds like there are other boards where it has been used as ex parte, so arguably it could be. Um, I'm not sure that we have done that in the past, but I can do some research on that and get back to you for the next.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, cuz I think that we'll have everyone chime in, because I, I visited that site as well. I, I don't, I don't find it to be a conflict of, of, of interest or anything like that relative to to, to, to my work, and I, I think that's something that we regularly do as members, so it would be great just to get us a, a concrete answer on that, thanks.
Right, I could definitely circle back before the next hearing.
Laura?
Just quickly to say, I agree with George, it is my uh typical practice to visit a site before I uh sit in a quasi-judicial role to make a decision about it, and I would expect that hopefully all of us do that on a regular basis whenever we can, maybe not every site. So, uh knowing whether we need to disclose that or not would be good, thank you.
And I'm gonna raise my hand and just simply say um that I serve on the board of Better Boulder, and so does Daniel. Uh, Daniel and I have discussed many things, but we have not discussed this project, and we've been careful about that, so um that, just wanna, wanna make that clear. Okay, uh Laurel, do you need to ask me anything about that, I, I can, I can be impartial, so anyway, if that's what you needed.
Yep, for the record, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, okay, um. Let's go to board discussion, and uh a- as we began this meeting with a discussion about uh timing and um getting through our agenda tonight, knowing we have a very large agenda item after this, uh I would make two requests that we begin our discussion, but relatively quickly, I would like for us to transition to discussing under a motion and a, and then any amendments to that motion, rather than just a, a longer kind of general discussion about thoughts and feelings and stuff. thoughts and feelings and stuff. So, we can begin with a general discussion, but I very, very early like to have that transition to debate in support or opposition to a motion and an amendment, so I'm going to open it up. George?
Thank you, I'll make this brief. Finally, you know, from my perspective, finally, we have a project that's asking for height exceptions, that's interesting for the city, that's doing something innovative, that's demonstrating the need, you know, be it the flood issues, the mechanical space that they're looking for, the raised ceilings in between. It's interesting, because we've seen other quasi-life sciences projects come up in concept review, and it's so clear the difference of intent and thoughtfulness that this project has put forth versus other things that we've seen. And so, I'll obviously let other board members chime in, I'm ready to vote on this, I think it's a pretty easy vote. But I also, I think it's worth just underlining that with a period and underline and capital letters, that this is, when we see other projects, this is the bar that we need to measure things against in concept review and site review, because this has been really thoughtfully put together and hits just, I think nearly every box. It doesn't hit every box, because we still have a jobs housing imbalance, it's gonna bring a lot of high-income jobs into, it's gonna put more housing pressure on us. But from what this project is doing, I just think it's a rare occurrence, and it's something that we should focus on on board, so thank you, and thank you to developer and the city for putting it together. I will say, the one little nit which is, you know, being presented a vaulted ceiling in what is mechanical space as the shiny image of the project. I just don't think it's necessary to do, and it could be a disappointment to the public and others when we just don't need to have that kind of disappointment on such an awesome project to begin with. So, thank you.
Laura?
I'm gonna second just about everything that George just said. I think this is an exciting project, I am very grateful to the applicant team for answering our request to explain why do you need that ceiling height, and I think that they have done that in explaining what that catwalk is and what kind of equipment would go up there and what purpose it serves for the building, so. And I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I do find that it is compatible with the eclectic nature of the neighborhood and the vision for the future. This is, as staff explained in the opening presentation, this is right near Boulder Junction, it's right near East Boulder Sub-Community Plan, it's right near the BVRC. This is an area, it's right near railroad tracks and a major freeway overpass, right? So, this is an area of town where intensity is appropriate, where height is appropriate. And I love that they're bringing some interesting concepts and a commitment to sustainability, and really thinking hard about what's the future need of the world as well as Boulder, and trying to be very aspirational in what this building is, even though it's gonna cost them more. So I'm supportive of the project, as always, I'm willing to entertain the reasonable suggestions for conditions posed by other board members, totally open to that, but where I sit right now, I'm very excited to approve this project.
Thanks, Laura. ML?
Thank you, Mark, let me see, I lost my notes, here we are. So I am going to put a little bit of a different perspective on the table. I am concerned with the height. And I'm not so much concerned with the height as a it's too tall, as much as I am concerned with the height. And I think that the fly-through and ground level elevations that the applicant put up speak to what my concern is. So this is a neighborhood of low slum orthogonal buildings. They either got flat or low slope roofs. That is what the context of the immediate and, you know, further out adjacent neighboring buildings is. There are one to two-story buildings ranging from fifteen feet to forty feet. So I question the compatibility of the two plus the mechanical loft. Given the building, I think it's maybe, I didn't do the final map, over like fifty-two, fifty-five feet tall. So, it's also not an orthogonal building. So mass height. It's an area of town that has a very modest character. And the thing that I have struggled with on this project is everything in Boulder doesn't have to become something that it isn't. You know, we're not, I don't think we're aspiring to be Denver. I don't think we're aspiring to, well, let's change the character of every place that gets redeveloped in our city. We are not getting any benefit from the height insofar as housing monies or anything of that nature, community benefit. We are it's being proposed on an architectural basis. It is the way I look at it, and again, I think that those flyovers and the elevations showing all the context helped clarify this for me, that, and I'm looking at site review criteria that hasn't been met, I'm looking at FFI and FII. And it's the building height, mass scale, orientation, architecture, configuration, compatibility. And I think one of the things that too easily happens when we get excited about future and what could be is we forget that there's value. This part of Boulder has been an industrial part for many decades. And there is nothing fabulous about a sea of asphalt with a little building in the middle of it. But there is value in, it's a low slum building type of an area, and if you look at it with the blurred eye, you know, you just kind of take in the landscape and you see what it is. I liken this to, we've got, you know, this herd of goats, right? And they're tall, maybe some are, goats aren't all the same, the low slum orthogonal buildings aren't all the same. There, of the five of the eight adjacent buildings are one-story, they're fifteen to twenty-four feet tall. One is two stories at thirty-five feet tall, and two or three stories around forty to forty-six feet tall. The proposed building is three stories and fifty-two feet tall. It's taller than every single building around it. So, I, what I question is if we've got this sort of eclectic and I'm not sure it's really that eclectic, but okay, I'm not gonna argue with that take on it. But it's basically a low slum area, it's not about little monuments. And I think that this building will stand out in the sea of goats as like a llama showed up or something, it is not the same. Now, compatible does not mean that it has to be the same, but I think it has to give back, and I'm I love what they're doing with the site and the open area and the sort of co-opting the version of the sea of asphalt with the sea of green and pervious and that sort of a thing. What I question is, do we really need that mechanical loft? And I do believe that the applicant said it more than once. They can't control what the tenant actually does. So how that loft might or might not be used into the future is not in our control. We've got this extra, what, seven foot eleven, I think is what has been put out there. Seven foot eleven foot height loft area that is basically being given to this project with no benefit to the city other than an aesthetic one perhaps. I think that the client is proposing that it's an architectural move. If you are at the street and you can look at those street perspectives, you will likely not see that slope roof at all. And the idea that a flat roof with mechanical and then to design a mechanical screen as an additional element, that's a design problem that can be solved elegantly and beautifully, and it is an industrial area. This isn't a Class A office area, this is industry. And in industry, you expect to see mechanical. I mean, that is the nature of an industrial area, so I don't find that the criteria of compatibility has been met with height, with mass, with the basic nature of a low slum orthogonal context. And from everything I looked at when I examined the drawings, and again, speaking with asking the applicant straight up, this is for an architectural benefit. That's what it's being proposed as, and there is no guarantee that it won't be used by the tenant in some way that has nothing to do with mechanical. As George pointed out, we see that in their elevations. I'm not sure that it needs to have, I think it's an elegant building. I am not questioning the aesthetic it is proposing, I'm not sure that it needs the height to achieve that. And I'm not sure that us giving up this the low slum quality of that neighborhood to this building will achieve that, so I am planning to make a motion to amend with the condition of removing the mechanical loft and having a flat wall. And so my question would be, is the staff have any thoughts or concerns about such a condition?
Can I colloquy on that real quick before we go to staff?
Sure, let's do it.
I just wanna make sure I understand. In this zone, what they could build by right, without going through site review, is three stories and forty-five feet tall, plus mechanical on top of that, is that right? So even if we didn't approve this building, they could go ahead and build a three-story building, forty-five feet tall, plus mechanical, that would not be a low slum necessarily orthogonal, I had to look that up, ML, orthogonal meaning has right angles, so flat-roofed building. So am I understanding that correctly?
Laura, your question is directed to staff.
Oh, the drawings show the height.
I'm sorry, Laura, you were asking staff.
I just wanted to colloquy on, yes, so ML asked staff if they have any concerns about not allowing the loft and having it just be screened mechanical. I just wanna make sure I understand that the applicant also has an option as a by-right building to go up to three stories and forty-five feet tall, plus mechanical on top of that. So just a colloquy on that.
Charles, you're muted, sorry.
Sorry about that. Thanks for the question, and yeah, Laura, you're correct, as far as what the by-right options are. And the use of administrative conditional height in the industrial zone, so forty-five feet can be achieved administratively out there.
And I'm sorry, Charles, and would they also get the five feet for the flood elevation?
That would have to be factored into the overall, how they measure the building. They don't get an additional five feet because they're in the flood plain, that has to be part of the overall designing grading of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Sixteen feet of mechanical equipment on top of that forty-five feet, so you're right on those accounts. As far as the condition goes, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we're at a point where we feel like it satisfies the criteria well. I would get worried that having exposed mechanical equipment and a flat roof that we haven't had the benefit of reviewing, particularly with the board, might result in a less preferable outcome. So I think the condition would need to be very specific what it is the board would wanna see. I don't know that I would necessarily be comfortable translating, just make it a flat roof with exterior roof-mounted mechanical equipment. I also think from a policy perspective, our code goes a long way in trying to screen and enclose mechanical equipment. So I think from a policy perspective, there's a little bit of push and pull there, but if there were to be such a condition, it would need to be very specific.
Thank you for answering that question.
ML, it's all right, you, I'm gonna go to Kurt, and then we're going to start talking about motions and your conditions. Kurt, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I won't go into too much detail, but I just would say that I largely agree with George and Laura's perspectives. I think Laura pointed out well, that if we were to not grant the height exemption, but they build it with screening, really, we would end up in a pretty similar location height-wise. It would just look different from the outside. Maybe it would have to be five feet less because of the flood elevation, but otherwise, we'd be in pretty much the same place, and I think with a significantly less attractive building. So I support the building, the project as it is proposed. And I would like to move to approve. So I moved to approve site review application, LUR twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four one, adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
I'll second that.
Great, so we have a motion and a second. Convention says, Kurt, it's your motion, and after the second, if you want to add anything or speak to your motion, now is a good time.
No, I think that other board members spoke well on it, and I don't think anything additional is needed.
I would like to point out that, Mark, you did not give yourself time to speak before Kurt made the motion. I don't know if you wanna make general comments, usually the chair goes last, but since you didn't get to speak in the first round, if I may take the opportunity to invite you to say something if you'd like to.
Thank you, Laura. I do, actually, and I was just about to do that, so, thank you. And I concur with George and Kurt and Laura about the general building design. And I just, I wanna address this idea of of context, and that, you know, if we are all, rather than looking forward, if we are always looking at the current context, then some of our favorite things wouldn't exist. And I think that it's our job to discern between things that are out of context and out of place when the place is a great thing. Versus things that are out of context and feed a vision that is forward-looking about where we want to go, and especially when the context, and I'm not to diminish the people, the businesses that are in that area. You know, I frequent them, whether it's Tundra, the restaurant supplier, or gases. It's all, I'm familiar with those businesses and Rudy's Bakery and stuff, but I think this is, our job is to discern using the BBCP and other documents as a lens where we want to go. And I think this project fulfills that vision of where we want to go, which is better architectural design and a more welcoming environment, and buildings that, rather than being you know, poorly insulated metal shed buildings that were not meant to last some as long as they have, we want to go to Uh, we want to go to um buildings that enhance our environment, uh improve our visual world and 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 make a dent in our climate goals, our transportation goals and um and our aesthetic goals. So I'm all for this and uh and I would entertain uh any motions to um to uh the the main motion if anyone has a condition. Uh Kurt?
I'm not sure I got a second on my motion.
Oh, yeah, George. We're 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 on that, okay.
And and Mark, do we want to invite Devin to be tracking the motion and the amendments on the screen?
Sure, um if if we have if we have any uh I don't I don't know that we need anything on the screen unless we have a a proposed amendment to the motion.
Well, I think I heard that M L would like to make an amendment, and I'd be very interested to see what that amendment is.
Okay, M M L, if you uh want to make an amendment to the main motion, now would be the time.
I am glad to have that opportunity. And yes, I remember that chart. It now is the time. So um I move to amend to add the following language to the motion.
Have you have you sent this to Devin?
No, I have not. Devin, would you like it?
That would be fantastic if you could.
Let me copy and paste.
And Devin, if you could also put up the main motion language that staff suggested and that Kurt read, and then we can see the amendment right under it.
Absolutely, happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
Let me see into chat, that's where we put him?
Sure, that's great, thanks.
I can hear some background talking. Is that us?
Sounds like a television or a radio or something. It's gone now, thank you whoever muted.
Okay, I just sent that. Um, I just sent that to Devin. Should I wait till he puts it up before I read it? Mister Chair?
Yeah, he's okay. Uh, I think we're we're there.
Do I need to read it?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay.
Beginning with, I move to amend.
Correct. I move to amend to add the following language to the motion. Um. With the following revisions to the recommended conditions. One, add that the final plan shall replace the sloped roof and mechanical loft area with a flat roof. The building height shall not exceed forty five feet. Mechanical apertures may be placed on the rooftop and shall meet height and screening requirements for rooftop appurtenances in the Boulder Revised Code. And um I guess, is anybody gonna second this? I have a bad feeling, but I thought I put it out there.
Yeah, no, M M L, thank you, thank you for your amendment and uh and thank you for having that prepared and written out. And uh and now the next the next move is uh to obtain a second. Is there a second to this uh uh motion? Seeing none, uh that uh that proposed amendment dies. Is there any other? Um, is there any other amendments that any member would like to propose? Okay, um seeing none, then I'm going to um uh call the question and I will, actually Devin, if you could just put that back up there for one more minute. Uh, I believe I am supposed to read the the motion.
That's correct, sure.
Okay, um.
Sorry, I I I just like to make one quick comment. I won't belabor it, I I want to push through on time. But I I do want to support M L's thoughts around context. It is important on the BBC, and the reason why I'm not supporting the motion i- in this particular case is because um the applicant has sort of, I I think at least from my perspective, exceeded my expectations as it relates to what they're proposing here. And it to underscore what I was saying before is this this does not appear to be the wolf in sheep's clothing of jamming in a bunch of office into the I G zone. And we're actually getting um quality uh industrial, light industrial space put back into this. And I think that there's a major difference and and that that is part of the context and fabric of this neighborhood and why 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 I think the height is merited here. Um, because they've demonstrated that. And so I wanted to put that out there because it it context is important. I don't want to say the context isn't important. I just think in this case, we're we're getting something um that 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 in many proposals we've we've seen lately. Um, we're getting a lot of just office pretending to be I G. And this in this case, I think we're getting something that that fits this zone pretty well. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, George. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move us along here on a motion to approve site review application L U R twenty twenty two dash zero 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 four one. Adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum. So, uh Laura.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
M L.
No.
Kurt.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. So that's a wrap on that agenda item. And um so we we did go a little long on that, so I'm gonna suggest a five minute break and uh come back and um hit our next agenda item hard. So I'm gonna say we return at uh eight oh four. Okay.
Okay. I'm looking for M L and George, and you guys may be there. Or maybe not. Just one more. One more second here.
Carl, it's nice to see you.
Good seeing you.
Did you make it over to the rez before this meeting?
The reservoir?
Yeah, or I don't know if staff were invited to the volunteer picnic.
I wasn't, no, I don't think so.
Okay, maybe it was just for volunteers. Staff should be there. You work as hard as we do. Harder, way harder. Do you get your own picnic, your own party at the rez?
We did have a picnic a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Oh, nice.
All right, I'm M L. I hope you're there and just need to turn on your camera. There we go. Okay. Um, we're going to uh. Rejoin the real world and move on to our next agenda item five B. Public hearing and recommendation, the city council regarding proposed ordinance eighty-five ninety-nine to amend. Title nine land use code V R C nineteen eighty-one related to the site review process and. Process and intensity, form and bulk, use, parking and subdivision standards concerning affordable and modest sized housing. And setting forth related details. So Carl will walk us through his presentation. And then we have, we have thirty minutes budgeted for his presentation. And then two hours, which would put us at ten thirty. For all of our own deliberation and discussion, including possibly many amendments and some of them quite technical, so. I encourage all of us while uh watching Carl's presentation. And hearing that to be honing anything that you might want to propose, especially in light of. Brad's uh. Advice as we started, so. Take her away, Carl, and thank you very much for being here again tonight.
Uh, Mark, if I could just, Mr. Chair, Mr. Temporary Chair, if I could just point out real quick, we probably want to save about ten or fifteen minutes at the end for matters from staff and or matters from the board. So a little less time than that.
Yes, I, what I was looking at is the uh. Budgeted time of hour and twenty minutes for board discussion, thirty minutes for staff presentation, so.
Okay.
And then, but yes, agreed, agreed, so we can either shorten that or go a little later. But, but roughly, I'm urging us to sharpen our pencils.
All right, good evening, board members. I'm Carl Geiler with Planning and Development Services. Before the board tonight is ordinance eighty-five ninety-nine. Uh, the project is called zoning for affordable housing. Uh, last we discussed this with planning board was in April. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about that in the presentation. We went into a lot of detail on these changes before we prepared the ordinance. So this project was initiated by city council at the retreat in twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's one of the code change projects that's meant to address the housing crisis that exists here in Boulder and across the nation, particularly here in Boulder. There's a lot of articles that talk about how zoning regulations can make housing costs even more pronounced if they're limiting to how many. Housing units can be built within the city, so that's something that we've been looking at as part of this project alongside. Uh, the A D U project, the occupancy project and the inclusionary housing project. Uh, so the purpose statement of the project was to evaluate the land use code with the intent of removing zoning barriers. To more affordable units and smaller modest sized units. So we had presented this problem statement and purpose statement and the goals and objectives to council. Uh, at a study session in November of twenty twenty-two and then yet again. Uh, at a study session where we went into more detail in March of this year, so again, moving in the direction of removing some zoning barriers to housing. Uh, so the title's already been read, so the purpose of tonight is to hold a public hearing on the, on the ordinance eighty-five ninety-nine, or as it says occupancy, it's the zoning. For affordable housing ordinance, uh, there should be deliberation on the ordinance tonight and then a planning board recommendation to city council. So these are the questions that we've posed to, to planning board tonight. Uh, does planning board find that the proposed ordinance implements the adopted policies of the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan? And does the planning board recommend any modifications to the ordinance? So before we start, I just wanted to touch on what is affordable housing? What do we mean when we say that is part of this project? Um, what we're saying here is that there's, there's three different types of. Affordable housing that's, that's trying to be achieved through this project, so obviously permanently affordable housing is where you have deep restricted housing. Um, that's in perpetuity. It's done through our inclusionary housing program. Um, we also have attainable housing, which is market rate housing, but generally housing where the households pay no more than twenty-eight to thirty percent of their income on housing. And then we're also talking about smaller market rate units that are comparatively more affordable at their smaller sizes. Uh, as compared to the larger market rate units we've seen in recent years and largely that's been. Partly driven by, by zoning, so that's something I'm going to talk about tonight. But by relaxing some zoning limits in certain zones, um, the lot area. Or open space per dwelling unit requirements, it can allow more housing to fit within the same, you know, basically basic volume. And what we, the, the F A R, the height or the setbacks, things like that. So what we're trying to achieve here is just allowing more housing and the more housing that can be. Provided in these projects means that we would have a higher percentage of inclusionary housing with each project, so the whole. Purpose is to increase the amount of, of housing opportunities in the city of Boulder and as part of that increasing to the. The yield of I H units in the city. So these are some statistics just to ponder about housing in the city. I won't go into all the detail here, but what it shows is you can see that in recent years, much like in other parts of America, sorry. You can see that the highest percentage of housing types in the city of Boulder are single family detached. Uh, and then multifamily attached. You can see when we're, when we look at kind of the smaller sized units like duplexes or triplexes or townhomes. Uh, it takes up a much smaller percentage at nine percent. So part of the goal of this project is to address that with the smaller housing types and to try to, to increase that yield. Of middle housing in the community, so you can see from this. Um, graphic, you know, a lot, and this is pretty typical across the United States, particularly since World War Two. What you see in most cities are single family. Uh, housing units and then you see the higher stacked housing apartments. You don't see as much of, of the duplexes or triplexes, things of that nature and what. Middle housing is really supposed to, you know, allow for more housing opportunities that are more affordable comparatively, but also at scales that are more synonymous with like a single family development. So this is something that's playing out across the nation. You've probably read some articles about how many cities are trying to loosen up. Uh, their zoning regulations to get more middle housing, so this is a slide that just shows the American Planning Association. Uh, pointing out that cities should be taking this seriously to add to their housing inventory since zoning has limited. Uh, housing over the years and that has contributed to increasing. Costs, so encouraging smaller units where possible, looking at reducing minimum lot sizes, allowing. Uh, missing, missing middle housing everywhere, allowing for more housing types. And also taking a look at, at parking requirements, see if those could be relaxed to get, allow more housing. So I think the board is aware of the state bill, the senate bill that we were considering several weeks ago. Um, it was something proposed by the state where there were. Uh, basically mandates on localities for middle housing, A D U's relaxed occupancy restrictions. There were several different iterations and we were monitoring that closely. Um, it ultimately did not pass. Um, at the state level, um, so it's something that, you know, could come in the future, there could be future mandates from the state, it's happened in other states. Uh, but it's something that we'll continue to monitor. Um, in the packet, we did provide a link to the June fifteenth city council memo where we. Reported the council on a number of national studies, commentaries and articles. Uh, that kind of spoke to loosening up zoning regulations. We tried to show a, a fair distribution. Of articles, some for and against, but I think the vast majority did say that zoning. Restrictions greatly limit housing availability in communities and that restricted housing supply, among other things, also drives up housing prices. So a lot of the articles do recommend adding housing to increase affordability overall. Um, there were some articles that made the argument to the opposite, there, there was an instance where a, a private group had prepared a study. Uh, in Austin saying that adding the, the additional housing drove up costs, uh, but I think most of the studies that we saw. Talked about, you know, this is something that needs to be addressed holistically by adding housing. Um, Boulder is one of those communities where we even have a, a higher. Uh, demand than many places, uh, just like Bay Area communities, so we have even more limitations here that drive up costs, so. It's even more difficult to solve the problem here in Boulder, so it has to be handled in a, in a multi-pronged approach, either. You know, through zoning, through inclusionary housing and other methods to, to help with the housing costs, so not one option can. Can help solve the problem and these are things that, that the West Coast communities. Have seen particularly in Washington and Oregon where there's actually been state legislation that requires additional housing. Loosening up occupancy restrictions, opening up housing opportunities wherever you can to help with the housing costs. So based on that, uh, we went to council in March, uh, we, we basically presented these particular three. Options to council at the time we had focused on. Uh, mainly our, our, our growth areas or neighborhood centers or the Boulder Valley Regional Center, looking at those zones. Uh, areas like diagonal plaza where there's opportunity to add housing and how we could loosen up. Um, the rules in those areas to get more housing, we, we saw from the diagonal plaza project, which I'll talk about briefly. Um, that there was limitations on how many units they could build there. And, and that they needed a special ordinance to build the project as they, as they intend to with additional housing and more I H housing. Uh, and that was why council, or one of the reasons council had asked us to work on this project. Uh, when we, we also talked about, uh, the potential for adding duplexes and triplexes in. Low density areas of the city, we didn't recommend that at the time, since when we worked on the large homes and lots project, there weren't. That many lots, uh, that could allow the additional units, but we did take a second look. Um, with the low density zones, R L one in particular, where there actually is. Quite of a bit of potential for that and I'll talk about that. And then we talked about parking modifications such as allowing residential parking reductions up to twenty-five percent without site review. Uh, and, and these things were all supported by council, uh, but council basically asked us to go further. Um, so I, with respect to the density adjustments, council asked us to look at all the high density residential zones and see if changes could be made there. Uh, council also asked us to explore the duplex and triplex in single family zones more. Uh, and we've done that, so I, I wanted to just touch on that real quick. Uh, we did look at, uh, the R H one through R H five zoning districts, you can see the zones are shown on the map here, um. We looked at ways to change the zoning restrictions. Uh, based on the lot area per dwelling unit or open space per dwelling unit and shifting it more. To a floor area ratio and site wide open space requirement, which is kind of a more simple way. Of, of calculating it and it also would not stand in the way of how many units could actually build on the site. Obviously, projects are still going to have to meet like parking requirements, landscape and other open space requirements, but we looked at these zones. We also looked at, um, changing the site review thresholds to encourage. Middle housing, so we, we looked into that with more depth and we also looked at the, uh, low density zones here. We talked about this in April, basically there, there are limitations to what, uh, increasing density and a large part of the city. In the very low density residential or low density areas based on the Boulder Valley. Conference of plan, it caps out the density in those areas, so if. Density were to be increased in those areas, it would have to be done first. Uh, through a comp plan update process and then the zoning would have to follow after. But we tried to look at ways where we could allow more units that would still fit within those limitations in the B V C P, so. Um, looking at the two to six dwelling units per acre that's allowed in the. Uh, R E, the residential estates and the R L, the low density residential zones. There are a, a number of properties in those areas that are large enough that they could still be subdivided and single family homes could be built under today's code. Uh, but you wouldn't be able to add a duplex or a triplex, uh. So we looked at those as potential areas where additional units could be added and there actually is a potential for well over sixteen hundred units again over time. Um, where people could either subdivide today or, or actually convert. And create a duplex or a triplex if the land area of their lot still met the density requirements that are in the code today. Uh, and then one note was looking at, uh, changing the compatible development rules, so they wouldn't. Just apply to single family homes and that they would also apply to duplexes and triplexes, so. Council asked us to look into those two particular topics and also get more. Community feedback on these changes, so I wanted to report back on that. Uh, we've heard a diversity of, of feedback on these particular changes. Um, in talking to, to a lot of the, um, single family owners, we've heard. Concerns that these zoning changes will disproportionately impact. Uh, their areas, there was concerns about adding duplexes and triplexes and single family neighborhoods. Uh, concerns that families will be driven out by these changes and parking impacts will increase. Uh, we talked to Plan Boulder about these changes where they shared a lot of those concerns. Particularly if, if changes are made in these areas and then there's no guaranteed affordability was a concern. There, they felt that there needed to be deed restrictions on any increases in, in housing types. Uh, or units throughout the city and that the city can't build, build itself out of the, the housing crisis. We also talked to the community connectors in residence and we had, we've got some interesting perspectives there. I think many of the members felt that zoning restrictions in general are limiting. Uh, and in the past have been targeted to specific types of people. There was a concern that, you know, in America today, a lot of the younger generations can't reach the American dream. Um, there was, uh, support for adding housing types, but concern expressed about. Adding more concentrated housing units that might be lower. Quality, you know, that could create future ghettos and that there, there shouldn't be assumptions that people. Want to live in, in a high density and that crowding people together is not always conducive to their cultures and may affect their mental health. In talking with the development community and some housing proponents, uh, we've heard a lot of support for these changes. We've gotten more technical comments, you know, from some in the community about, you know, additional zoning districts that should be considered or tweaks to the zones that we've already. Uh, included in the scope. When we talked about occupancy, uh, several weeks ago, um, we had included a lot of questions relating to this project as well. Uh, as part of the Be Heard Boulder questionnaire that was sent out and we talked about the limitations that that questionnaire, um. Presents, you know, it, it's, it's only one tool among many to get feedback, it's not viewed. The same way as a statistically valid survey, but it does give us, you know, basically a temperature check on where people. Um, sit on these issues, uh, when we ask questions about. Adding additional housing units in the commercial areas and neighborhood centers, which the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan already anticipates. Uh, we saw a majority of support, um, for those changes. A little bit less for the duplexes and triplexes, but it was, it was a majority of respondents. Um, that showed support for that. Um, it was more mixed when it came down to reducing parking requirements because there were concerns that. You know, relaxing things too much might present impacts. Uh, so attachment C has a, a lot of detail on, on the feedback we've heard through this, this whole process. So we've gone to housing advisory board twice on this project, um. Once on March twenty-second and then we were just there last week. Uh, with the ordinance, uh, when we presented this to, to have originally, um, have supported all the staff recommended options. Um, at the March hearing, there was some disappointment expressed. That we couldn't increase density in the single family areas and that was a missed opportunity, but they did recognize that there is a more involved. Uh, Boulder Valley Conference of Planning process that would have to happen to allow that to occur and that they would support that in the next update of the plan. Um, some members felt that more aggressive parking reduction changes should be allowed through this project. When we presented the ordinance to have last week, uh, had recommended approval five to zero. Uh, of the change, uh, they commended that, uh, we expanded the scope of the project to include more duplexes and triplexes in single. Family areas more than they had expected. Um, there was support for making review process easier for allowing more housing types in the community and, and general support for. Allowing more modest sized housing, more missing middle. Housing in the community, there was one member that expressed some skepticism on the guaranteed affordability front, are we really? Going to get, uh, more affordable units by allowing these changes, uh, it's something that we've been hearing throughout this process. So board members may recall the conversation that we had on April eighteenth about this project, we presented many of these. Options before most of the board supported, uh, the staff recommended options. Um, there was calls for making the, the parking reduction process more robust. Based on, um, enhanced transportation demand management plans as part of that process. Uh, three board members supported duplexes and triplexes. Um, one member of the board found that the changes didn't go far enough. Um, there were two board members that were more cautious of the changes. Um, in that if we're to make these types of changes, it really should be encouraging people that are in commuting the option of living. Within the community, um, that any kind of F A R or, or. Uh, increases should be tied to missing middle housing. Uh, we should be focusing more on property ownership rather than getting more renters in the community. Uh, there was concern about reducing open space requirements and concerns about allowing duplexes and triplexes. Uh, in single family areas. So after we received all that community engagement, all the feedback from boards, we reported back. Uh, to city council on June fifteenth, again, we attached. Or included a link to the June fifteenth memo, which included all the articles and commentary, um, in our findings, um. We, we, we basically reported back on what kind of changes could be made in the higher density zones. The lower density zones as well as changes to the site review process to. Encourage missing middle housing and council supported all the changes, uh, that we were proposing, so they. They requested that we then move forward with development of an ordinance. So now I'm just going to talk about the, um, content of the ordinance. Um, and this is all in the memo, obviously, so. With respect to review processes, the intensity standards and form and bulk standards. Um, we were proposing in the ordinance that any project that, that. Creates a hundred percent middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes and townhomes. Uh, that it would be exempt from site review, no matter how many units. Are proposed, this is to encourage more missing middle housing in, in the community. Um, if they were to propose any kind of modifications, that would kick it into site review, but we're really. Trying to encourage more by right developments where the scale, you know, is lower and gets into that, that missing middle. Um, segment of, of what we're looking for. There's a number of zones, uh, R H one, R H two, R H three and R H seven that have a mandatory planning board review if there's any requests. For additional units, we're proposing, uh, to remove that requirement. Uh, from the code, uh, and basically just allow it by right, um, in R H seven, we're proposing. To have it as a call up, uh, since we didn't want to make. Too many changes to the R H seven zone since that's being considered for Alpine balsam. Um, but otherwise we would be removing that automatic, uh, planning board review. We also took a look at our form and bulk standards related to townhomes or townhouses, we've heard from the development community that. Our code does not encourage townhouses because of the fact that we have side setbacks. And if you're doing townhomes where a townhome is, houses on its own lot, you basically automatically have to go to site review. If you want to do the shared wall and have it on its own lot, so we were proposing a, a part of the ordinance that would allow down to zero. Uh, for townhouse lots, uh, without having to go through site review and that that would be one way of encouraging townhouses. Uh, moving on to the R L, R R and R E zones, we've changed the use table to, uh, make. Triplexes and duplexes and allowed use. Um, the intensity standards, uh, also would be largely the same except for R E where we would allow. Um, one unit for every seventy-five hundred square feet. Consistent with the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan, so basically if the density requirements are met, these, these uses would be allowed, uh, based on this ordinance. We're also proposing to eliminate the user view requirement for efficiency living units, what it says now in the code is if you have, um. More than forty percent of the u- units as E L U's, it requires a user view. More than forty percent of the u- units as ELUs, it requires a user view. Uh, we largely find that that's a deterrent for doing that and also it's unnecessary since. Site review already has a a criterion that was added that requires a diversity of housing types. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about each particular zone, but overall in terms of the intensity standard.
Sorry, Carl, Carl, just a quick question, um. That that diversity of housing types, that's like a sixty percent threshold, is that correct?
Um, I'd have to go back and look, it's it's in that um. BVCP section that we dated, so it just with each type of project, you have to have a.
If you could just pin that for me and just 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 let us know when you have a chance, I I just I just wanted to give that out there, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, basically you can't have a project, uh, it says you have to have more than one housing type if you have ELUs already. Uh, I don't recall the sixty percent, it really, it's based on um the size of the site. So the the larger the site gets, the more housing types you have to have.
Okay.
Now, I can try to to find that exact language. So what we tried to do here is is. Removing the deterrent of. The sixteen hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit or the twelve hundred square feet of open space per dwelling unit, what that does is. It basically, if you think about it. If you have an FAR for a site, for instance, in the BR one zone, I talked about this in April. If you figure out the total floor area that's permitted on a site. Based on a two point O FAR and BR one, and then you divide. The lot size by the sixteen hundred square feet. It automatically encourages a larger unit size, and this is something we've heard for years. That our zoning basically just encourages larger sized units. The calculation ends up being like thirty-five hundred square feet average. So this is one big reason why we're proposing to make these, removing these density calculations for the number of units. Uh, by removing them, then you encourage more units, smaller units. Within that same volume, so that's the way we've kind of looked at each of these zones is. Proposing an FAR and an open space requirement that roughly. Matches the intensity that we're already seeing out there without having this calculation that drives. Larger units, so these are the zones uh that we originally um had proposed and and council supported. Uh, council also asked us to look at the um RH zones, and we've done the same. Uh, so again, creating a tier of FAR based on the intensities. That we see in these areas and getting rid of those um lot area and open space or dwelling unit calculations. So I'm happy to answer questions, I know this is somewhat complex um on any particular zone. Um, we talked about this in April and this is kind of what I just said, that, you know, the Diagonal Plaza project, for instance. Had a zoning requirement that basically drives larger sized units, they did a special ordinance to allow more. Um, and as part of that project, there was actually a a big fairly big jump in the number of inclusionary housing units. Uh, under uh our estimation for what the. Number of IH units you would get from just meeting the zoning was thirty units. And by by weaving that twelve hundred square feet of open space per unit, uh, you could get up to seventy units. So it just shows that if you can pack in more more smaller sized units, uh, you get more IH units as a result. Uh, Laura.
Uh, Carl, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. I think what you're saying is the building envelope doesn't change, the amount of actual open space on the lot. Doesn't change, it's just able to be shared by more units, is that what I'm understanding?
That's right.
Okay, because I I think, and maybe I just misunderstood, but I think. There was a perception that the actual amount of open space on the lot was being reduced.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit difficult with like the twelve hundred square feet of open space per unit, because it's totally. Dependent on how many units they put on there, so, but in general, we're trying to match. What open space we typically see in those those areas. But largely, we've gone through each zoning district and tried to propose a site wide open space as an alternative. To the open space per dwelling unit, in some zones, you'll see that, you know, the open space is actually quite a bit uh more. Then uh is in the code now, and what we did is we looked at a number of different um. Projects that were built in those areas to see what open space was ended up provided. Um, on the site and saw some consistencies and then use that to inform the changes.
That that's that's really helpful, so it so it sounds like. The previous open space per unit was driving us to have larger units. Right, because there was only so much open space to go around and so dividing that up, you get larger units, and so now we're we're allowing more smaller units. With basically the same amount of open space on the property.
That's right.
And sometimes more.
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you, that's helpful for me to know.
Kurt? Question on this this slide.
Yeah, getting to this specific example of Diagonal Plaza, so Diagonal Plaza came in or will be coming in. At NFAR of one point seven, or I saw someplace one point seven.
Yeah, one point seven.
Okay, but we are proposing to allow one point five FAR. So even under these rules, Diagonal Plaza would not be able to be built. At all, right, other than with a special ordinance?
Well, it it would have, it would have to have been in at a a lower intensity, I I think our analysis of that was that. You know, we have to look at the zone, it word exists throughout the city, I think in Diagonal Plaza, you know, given the context of it. Being, you know, a derelict shopping center, there not being. Many uh established neighborhoods around it, we felt that one point seven makes sense there, but. One point seven is is kind of pushing it when you talk about. Other areas like Basemar or the Meadows Shopping Center where you have more. Single family in in closer proximity, we felt that one point five would be a more appropriate limit. Uh, for those centers. Mark?
Yeah, I I I, Kurt, are you done? Okay, I'm gonna call on myself for just a second. So, speak again, it's all about Diagonal Plaza and the uh the FAR. So, under the new ordinance. To make Diagonal Plaza work. The applicant would still have to go back for an actual ordinance change, is that correct?
Only if like if this were to pass, if they wanted to add floor area. The answer is yes.
But, okay. But they don't want to, i- if we if they wanted to, if we wanted to rebuild Diagonal Plaza, do it again. Uh, under the new ordinance. Under this new ordinance, it would, Diagonal Plaza would still require a special ordinance. To be built in the same configuration that is being built today.
I mean, if they were to rebuild it, for whatever reason, there already is an ordinance that permits what was built out there, so that would continue to apply.
But would that apply? In other, does that ordinance that diagonal was built, diagonal plaza was built under, apply? To strictly to Diagonal Plaza, or does that apply elsewhere?
Uh, that that ordinance strictly applies to Diagonal Plaza.
Right, so, so if someone wanted to build something super similar in a very similar situation. To Diagonal Plaza, we would still, to make it work, have to have another special ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, again, we'd have to look at kind of all the factors, you know, of what. The project provides to the city and whether it's supportable, I I think the way to look at it is. When you get to one point seven, that's getting at more of the. Uh, FARs that you see downtown. Uh, I mean, the most intense zone in the city of Boulder is actually BR one, which is like the area of the village. Um, Twenty Ninth Street, and that allows two point O up to three point O. So that allows, that gives you some context of where intensity is intended, then downtown ranges from one point. One point O basically to uh two point seven. So I think when we looked at these neighborhood centers, they're not downtown, so we feel like as it gets closer to two point O, that's. Kind of pushing the. You know, the mass and bulk in those areas, so we felt, that's why we felt one point five. Which kind of matches more of like, you know, what you see, you know. Um, on the hill or or other other zones that are closer to one point five seem more. Appropriate for those neighborhood centers.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there and there are more to come, I think, from all of us about this topic in our. Uh, debate, so thanks much, carry on.
So moving on to um parking standards, again, this is all things that we've discussed about before. Um, we're proposing to eliminate the current parking requirement. That applies to one bedroom units if they're more than sixty percent. Of a building, so it's currently one point two five, that would just change to one. Um, we're proposing to. Uh, allow residential parking reductions up to twenty-five percent through an administrative review, so a staff. Level review, uh, under today's code, any residential parking reduction automatically requires site review. Um, we're proposing to update the parking reduction criteria to have stronger. TDM requirements, uh, and we've we've done that in the language. And we've also reorganized and just kind of simplified the parking reduction criteria, just. Because there was a lot of redundancy and uh things that that didn't mesh with other parts of the code, we kind of reorganized that accordingly. And then lastly, again, getting back to townhouse lots, uh, there it, there are some subdivision standards that require a minimum. Lot width of thirty feet, uh, we've heard from a number of folks that a barrier to townhomes lot, townhouse lots. Is that thirty feet, so we're proposing that for townhouse lots where you have one townhouse lot per. Or or unit per lot, that you could go down to fifteen feet. Uh, in a by right manner and not require any subdivision waivers as part of that, so again, removing a barrier to to townhouse construction. So we feel that uh the project meets the goals and objectives that were outlined uh at the beginning uh of the presentation. Uh, we feel that these changes would allow more by right construction of middle housing, uh, for the uh reasons that I've I've outlined on the slides. Um, we've tried, we've aimed to keep a relatively similar form and massing restriction. For the the zones, but allow more housing and encouraging more smaller units. Uh, the point of the presentation is that allowing more smaller units would add to the city goal. Of more attainable housing, uh, more housing units would be more deed restricted permanently affordable housing. Uh, we've made changes in zones where we encourage housing in the Boulder Valley Regional Center and. Uh, neighborhood centers as well as industrial areas where we've loosened up. The rules to really kind of focus housing increases in those anticipated areas of growth. Uh, and then we're proposing uh those parking changes to remove the onerous. Uh, reviews of parking reductions um and supporting more housing development. So we find that these changes would be consistent with the uh BVCP uh policies that I've listed on the slide. And with that, I'm uh leaving a motion for planning board, uh, if. Board was so inclined to uh recommend approval to City Council, we can come back to this. Um, after deliberation, so that concludes presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Carl, that was um. Uh, this, this is a a really big project. And uh, obviously, um, staff has done tremendous work on it and tremendous outreach, and so. Uh, we appreciate uh everyone's, everyone's work on this, and I'm sure it's going to generate. Lots of interesting discussion here, um, so. Uh, before we go to deliberation, this is a public hearing item, and so, um. I think, I think now is the time for, what were first first questions for staff? Then the public hearing.
Right.
And then deliberate, then deliberation, thank you. So, uh, questions for staff, I see ML has her hand up.
I do, thank you, Mark, um, thank you, Carl, um, as always, it seems like your. Presentations get um shorter, but they get more to the point, so. Practice makes perfect here, thank you so much, um, so the the question I have. Um, I think I heard you say that one of the changes is that in RL. Use by right would allow duplex and triplex, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, in the ordinance, uh, it's proposed that the prohibition on duplexes and triplexes be removed. And be replaced with an A for allowed.
So that's in the table, that's in the use table?
That's in the use table, and then obviously, a property owner, if they were to. Provide a duplex or a triplex, they would have to have the minimum land area. Uh, to allow those uses, and that would be through a by right process.
Right, so my question is, if if that is. Uh, use that's already, that's allowed, that's going to be allowed, um. But we know where the obstacle is, which is. The seven thousand square foot intensity, right, um, the seven thousand square foot minimum lot. Is there? I, and I understand that the Boulder Valley Comp Plan's density intensity standard is what's guiding this, which is what, two to six units per acre? Um, is there any? Way that we can set up? The policy. So that, once the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Is updated, or should the Boulder Valley Comp Plan update those particular? Density intensity standards. This is ready to go, like, for example, can we change the minimum lot? Size per dwelling unit to, from seven thousand to say thirty-five hundred? Or can, is that, is that, can we do that without, um? And then knowing that nobody can do that because the BD CP won't allow it, but as soon as the BD CP is is passed. Then you don't have to come back and redo this. I'm just trying to say, how much can we get in place? That can fall into place once the next step is done?
In in our. In our judgment, I I feel like we're kind of pushing the limits of what can be done now with what's in the ordinance. Um, moving to create thirty-five hundred now. Um, would create a kind of a false expectation in the community, would create a direct conflict. With the Boulder Valley Commerce of Plan, so we wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, so, so we can't get ready to get ready, es- essentially, um. Yeah, I think that that's my, that, I'm trying to figure out, because RL one is the biggest, right, land use. In the residential and I know that one of the things. I think BD CP, um, is to support, right? Um, people staying in their houses and stuff, so, anyway, thank you for that answer, and I will take the rest into deliberation.
Alright, thanks, ML, Kurt.
Thank you, uh, and thanks Carl for the presentation and all your work. On this, it's a big project, following up on ML's question. We've talked before about these BVCP density intensity. Values, again, the BVCP says it is assumed that variations of the densities. On a small area basis within any particular designation, land use designation may occur. But an average density will be maintained for the designation. So it seems to me pretty clear that the density limits are to be in, are intended to be. Measured over an entire land use designation and not lot by lot, when we discussed this before, uh, I believe. Um, Brad talked about this and said that we're not interpreting it that way because we don't have the right data. To get the in densities on a land use designation basis, is that still the case?
Yeah, our our position on that has changed, I I think, number one, there would be a. It would be be a very complicated effort to aggregate all of the dwelling units in all of these zones and figure and. Minus out the the rights of way and figure out. What averages are in certain areas of the city and then figure out how to implement that, I think our concern is that. Um, a lot of these subdivisions that were done have maxed out. The density in many of these neighborhoods already, uh, we we look at these, you know, through PUDs all the time and they usually maximize. Uh, the density, uh, but the other thing is. If you average it, i- it creates an equity issue, it's like if somebody decides over here. To to build eight units and that fits, and that takes away from this property owner's ability to. To add three units, it's just, it becomes very difficult to monitor that and and um. Challenging, so we feel that there has to be a an over. Um, there has to be a a more analysis done on those areas and through the policy changes. Figure out uh how we can do it in a more straightforward way.
Can I piggyback on?
Yeah.
Yeah, just. Uh, just to share how we envision having a better understanding of that, I'm having preliminary conversations with the. Conference and planning team. Of whether it's important for us as a city to do a citywide services in this uh, inventory. Uh, that is a level of service, so this gets into the question of, do, you know, do we have good knowledge about adequate. Sewer capacity and water capacity and those kind of things. And I, I, I'm pretty sure that Carl said this, but I just want to reemphasize it or say it again, which is. I- i- it, it's, it's really a matter of equity. We don't want to create a situation where the first, you know. Five or ten or twenty or eighty in the door, get a permit and then suddenly we say, oh. Guess what? We didn't think about how, how this averages out now. Uh, now, now we have to stop building permits in this area because we don't have capacity, uh, whether it's a sewer line or whatever. Um, so zoning is not well suited for highly detailed accounting such as this would demand. Um, so that's why we speak in terms of, of, of kind of general. But I hope that helps kind of. Add additional color to Carl's.
Thank you very much. One other very detailed question. Uh, the, I, I noted that currently floor area transfer is allowed in MU one. And IGIMIS zones and you're proposing to. Eliminate that ability, is that, can you talk about what you're thinking there?
Yeah, we're, we're not eliminating that, um, those. That language on Floria transfers has been in the code for a long time. And there's actually been through site reviews. Site review combines all the properties involved in the site review together. And it allows you to average the floor area across those properties anyway. Uh, we actually updated the code, it's probably ten years ago now. To make clear that Floria can be averaged, so that's across all zones, so it basically. You know, those sections aren't necessary in the code anymore because it's already allowed. We're just trying to simplify the code by removing that, that language.
I love simplifying the code, that sounds great.
Okay. Um, Laura, have you, have you gone yet? You have questions?
I'm good, I don't have questions, thank you for checking.
Alright, M L.
Thanks, Mark. I have, I have two kind of little specific questions, um. So the staff considered duplexes, townhomes, three and fourplexes, middle housing, is that codified somewhere? Do we have a definition in our, in this? That tells us that because I think we ran into something and maybe we need to add this as well. At one of our planning board meetings where we realized single family dwelling didn't have a definition either, so. Are these getting picked up?
You know, um, we, we actually had originally. Created a definition for middle housing, but I think we just clarify in the exemption for site review what those housing types are, so it's not. It's not an official definition, but uh, it is, it, it's in one of the footnotes, I'm trying to find it here.
So is that good enough for us to be able to use the term?
I don't know that it's actually called middle housing in the code, I think we just say duplexes, triplexes and townhouses. In, in the ex- exception language.
Okay, um. So my second question is, so we're not referring to middle housing anywhere and in the zoning ordinance or anywhere that would. Require us to know what we mean by that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not referred to, originally we went down that route and then changed it.
Okay. And then just second little question here, um, I'm looking at use table six one, the RL ones. And the only thing I see allowed that is a plex is a duplex, and I thought you would said triplexes would be allowed as well. I- is that an oversight or?
No, it's not, um, the, if you look at the attached housing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, row, it's A with brackets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what you do is you look at A with brackets, it alerts you that there's additional standards. For attached housing, so then we had to add language. Um, in, under the RR, uh, RE and RL ones that basically says attached dwelling units. Are allowed by right, provided that no lot exceeds three dwelling units.
So that is what the bracketed A is under the RL.
Yeah, it just makes it clear that like you can't go over three units.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
George.
Um, thank you, uh, uh, just a, a quick reference back to what we talked about, if you could, uh, while we're deliberating. Get us the language around the diversity of housing regarding. The proposed elimination of the forty percent threshold on E L U's. I just wanna, I just want some clarity around that, you know, you're building a big development. And uh, you're not getting like, uh, you know, someone's not putting in, you know, ninety, ninety L U's and. One three, you know, one two bedroom to satisfy diversity of housing, I just want to understand sort of what, what that mix is.
Yeah, I'll pull that up and I could show it maybe at the beginning of deliberation.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call myself here for a second unless someone else has something, um. Carl, in, in your article reading, research, et cetera, and then in the summary of. So I'm referring to your uh, data collection. In the summary of your um, comments from the public about, uh. About the allowance of duplexes and triplexes in those three zones. Some were concerned that families would be driven out. Uh, and then um, down below, we have Community Connector saying that they wanted. This sort of diversity of, of housing. So two questions, um, is there any data to support? Uh, the idea that families are driven out by the presence of. A, a, a wider variety of housing duplexes and triplexes in what is currently single family zones in other, other places.
Um, not, not that I've seen, um, obviously there's an example we talked about before was Austin where they. You know, they had these duplexes that they, they called super duplexes and they were like. They were right near the university and they had a lot of students, so it catered to renter po- po- population, but I don't know that that would necessarily be. The case across all single family zones away from the university, I didn't find any data. That spoke to that, um, I think the concern is that. If properties are allowed more units, that it would. Encourage investors to buy up properties and do rentals. More rentals if they, if the, the city code allowed more units, I think that's the concern uh, that I've been hearing.
Okay, um. I, I know that the, that the, we did a concept review of the project at twenty eighth and J. Um, that, and I know that that was for annexation. And, and annexation is different than, than just. Site review and stuff, however, would, uh, how would? The proposed changes in regard to townhome shared walls, uh, width of lot sizes, et cetera. How would that affect that project? During annexation and then, or if we just annex that. And then, and then they came, I, I, how would, how would that affect that in, in, in what way would that affect that type of project? What way would this ordinance affect that type of project?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I know the particulars of that project to the extent to speak to all the, you know, minutia of how it could be different, I mean, I think obviously. If the code were more lenient on townhouses, then their, that project may not require. You know, site review modifications to setbacks and wouldn't require subdivision waivers. To do the townhouses, that how, they would just meet it by right, but again, I don't know much more. About that project and, you know, in terms of what uh, would be different.
Alright, I don't know if Charles or Brad have anything to add to that.
No, I think that's. Thanks, yeah, I don't have.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you. Alright, uh, back to you, M L.
I know I seem to have a lot of questions, sorry, um. Carl, um. And this might be out of the scope of the project, but because the word affordable housing is in there, I wonder. Is there any place or has there been a consideration? Um, over the fact that. Granting. Um. Multiple units in what has historically been single family housing. I'm talking about those zones like RL, RL one and two, um. Is there any thinking about requiring owner occupancy? And, and this as a means to dissuade investors from moving into this market and, um. Uh, kind of opening up the door for the owners of the property to be the developers of the property. And then have a way for them to. Um, be able to, A, stay on their property and leverage the value by selling. Some of the other ones, but always requiring that their owner occupied so that. We're building for people who actually want to live here.
Uh, tha- that's something that we have considered, um, we've heard that suggestion, um, through outreach, um. I think our concern about it is, you know, making. Any additional units in those areas, a condition of either owner occupancy or other method is going to require. A wholly new application process that has to be looked at on a case by case basis, it have to be monitored. Um, so our, our thinking is that. That would create a barrier to owners. Uh, moving forward to adding those units, so we've not suggested that uh, as an option.
Yeah, would be required for ADUs. So there is a mechanism in place when an owner wants to. Uh, create more housing on their property and I don't know that, has that been a barrier for people?
I mean, again, I, I, our thinking is that, you know, with ADUs, it allows. An accessory dwelling unit on a lot that's, you know, five thousand square feet and up, um. Whereas adding a duplex or triplex is the equivalent of, of. The option where they have today to subdivide their property and build another single family house, so making it. More difficult for them to do that, it's just going to incentivize them to use the mechanisms that are in the code today, subdivide. And add a single family house rather than going that route.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about, um, as we update our BVCP to allow more density. In the, in the smaller neighborhoods, or excuse me, on the smaller lots. Um, and that they could build them and not necessarily parcel them. Right, don't subdivide them, but you've got a triplex and, and. I hear a concern come up again and again that, um. A, they're not going to remain affordable, and I think if they're investor driven, they are not going to become, remain affordable. And people then start to worry about all the issues with densifying single family neighborhoods. And I think owner occupancy begins to speak to those, um, to those concerns in a. In a very tangible way. So I, I, I'm just putting that out there and it sounds like at this point, it isn't in the stream. And maybe there'll be an opportunity in the future, but I think it does start to speak to some of the concerns that people have about affordability. Because we all know that when an investor gets involved and the developer gets involved, their goal is to make money. Whereas when a person is developing their own property, um. Their money making goal might look very different than that of a, an investor or developer.
Um. Okay, any more, more direct questions for Carl, uh, to clarify anything? In the ordinance before we move into deliberative, public hearing and deliberation, so. Questions for Carl. Okay. Um, so now I would like us to, uh. I'm not, I don't know if we're gonna have anyone, but open up the public hearing. And thank you, Carl, and uh, thank you Vivian for coming on and uh, let's uh, let's see what happens with our public hearing.
Thank you, Chair, so. We just have five people with us from the public, um, and we'll start with Lynn Segal, you'll have three minutes and I just request. Other members of the public to go ahead and raise your hand if you intend to also share your comments during the public hearing. Um, Devin's got the timer, so please go ahead, Lynn.
So I was gonna speak to the, um, to the Ridgeway, but. I was in the middle of transporting myself back to my house from J C C. So, and you went less time than you intended, which is two and a half hours, and I started out at six twenty two, but. I misunderestimated, oh, well. Um, cause I was gonna say no to Ridgway, much as it's beautiful and much as they're doing all these things, but. Uh, you know, the parking restrictions. Pa- pa- um, lifting parking restrictions is just, I just completely disagree with Mark on that. Um, and, um, because, not because I don't want less parking, Mark, but because. I, I don't want to see subsidies given. Um, so that's the trick. And, and that's what these developers like, and I loved what M L had to say, it's just, that's elegant, you presented it perfectly. M L, um, that's the bottom line of the developers, they want this thing, um, they want. You know, more smaller units, right? And that isn't the most efficient way to live, um, and. What I would love to see is something, if Carl could find it, for. Architects to stimulate them to get bigger places, I recommend up to forty five hundred square feet. Actually for a house to fit nine people, this is why I was against the occupancy limits of five. Nine people, five hundred square feet each about, or decide what you want, what each human being deserves. It, as a minimum in square feet, and I think it's about five hundred, it's certainly not the three hundred of twenty two oh six Pearl. And then how much square footage for the land that goes with that human being? And then add that all up. Because if they're not, if they don't have that range of land like an animal has. Then they go out to use the other land and then we have open space burdens that we can never meet. Because our population's so increased. Um, and I think you have to maintain that and that's automatically gonna cause effect of population management. Or control. And, and I'm sorry the developers don't like it, but you know, having these small rooms with all this drywall. One person, I mean, I had seventeen people at my house and two and a half bathrooms and they all worked perfectly. And one washer and dryer, and it worked fine. Um, so that's a maximal use of each utility of the, you know, you're gonna use more water, I suppose, with more people. But that's the best way to stimulate whatever you have to make that happen, thanks.
Thank you, Lynn Segal. No other hands are raised, over to Chair.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, um. Are, do people need a super short break or are we ready to dive into this? Okay, let's go, okay, um, in, in that case, uh. Uh, again, thanks to Carl and staff, uh, for doing this and, and I think the complexity of this task is going to be. Represented by, uh, our discussions and motions and amendments, so. We'll carry on with the discussion for a few more minutes unless, unless someone is ready, uh, to begin the, uh. Actual motion process. Kurt, you've got your hand up.
I'm ready to begin the motion process.
Okay, I, I just want to before, I don't, I don't want to seem like I'm hammering on this, so. Uh, uh, is there any other sort of general discussion before we start on this, I'm, I'm anxious to start on it, but. I just want to give anyone, uh, the opportunity to speak generally, George.
Oh, you just muted. Sorry, myself, yeah, yeah, um. Di- diagonal plaza has been brought up as a lot of, uh, different examples here, and I know that's something you want to talk on too, Mark. Hey, I think diagonal plaza was a unique circumstance where we got inclusionary housing, basically onsite or adjacent to the site. You know, using it as a flagpole of something that's successful, I think is dangerous considering it hasn't been built yet. Um, I think we got a good amount of inclusionary housing. What we didn't get out of diagonal plaza. Was any homeownership or potential affordability. Um, from a market rate standpoint, that very much is um, out there as something that's. You know TBD and, and we won't really know for quite some time. What I will know from a development perspective is Tremel Crowe, who's uh, a national developer who's developing that project. Right? Has a very similar project in other markets. Uh, I, I know of one specifically that's almost identical. Where they term that as luxury housing. Um, these are developers who build housing. Um, completely rental, um, throw it into a real estate investment trust. Uh, in the case of diagonal plaza, it's an opportunity zone. Their, their goal is to avoid um, uh, any capital gains through that, through that opportunity zone. And, and boost the rents as quickly and as maximally as possible. So when they have an opportunity to flip that, it gets flipped at the lowest cap rate possible. Um, so my concern, very much so on diagonal plaza that I think is lost and all this stuff is. There is very little affordability that's going to be created with that whole project. Not only that, but there's limited diversity of housing there. And when those people that are renting are looking for other opportunities and bolder, we don't have any place for them to go. And a lot of the prosperity that's being created out of that project is going to be sucked out of the community. And into this national developers uh, pockets and ultimately flipped over in these reeds. Doesn't negate the benefit of the inclusionary housing, but I'm not sure that it does anything. For affordability and actually could, could, could send us backwards um, relative to that. And so I, I, I just want to put that out there that I, I don't know. I, I want to make sure that we have that in the discussion. Um, and then Carl, you brought one other thing since you brought this uh, up. So, so, so clarify on the diversity of housing relative to these ELUs. Uh, I, I'm sorry, it's really small on the screen. Can you just, can, 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 can you just clarify that for us?
Yeah, so if you look at number one, it says projects five acres or less shall include at least one qualifying. Housing type, uh, but then it says in projects with efficiency living units, at least one additional qualifying housing type. Shall be provided consistent um, with this paragraph. And then it just goes by, you know, the larger a property becomes, the more.
Housing types after. So, so in that, I guess that's my concern relative to, I mean, why, why that percentage of ELUs was in there. There, there's, it, it does say a, additional housing type, but in the case of that, uh, using an extreme example. Without, with this removal from the ordinance of the forty percent threshold, could someone conceivably build? A two hundred unit project that's a hundred ninety-nine ELUs and one two bedroom. And that would qualify as a diversity of housing type based on, based on how this is written.
I think it, it, it could be possible.
Yeah, so I guess that's the question to staff is sort of where are the safeguards? Because uh, I thi- I think that's what that forty percent was. I don't know that forty percent is the right threshold. But i- if there's, if there's no safeguard in sort of housing diversity in a project. And you know, simply someone can check a box by throwing in a, a one bedroom. Got significant concerns around that. So, uh, y- y- you can look that over. Maybe, maybe other board members have comments. I, I don't have any further comments beyond that for now.
I'll simply comment that I think that uh. That that's excellent input and that uh, there were a couple of things that. Were pointed out to me by a, a community member that were also kind of like oversight things. And I think that a project of this size, we're going to find things like this. And uh, and, and it's, anyway, I think that's, that's a good input. And uh, maybe we give them a, a few minutes to um. Dwell on that. And so Carl, uh, Charles Brad, if we make. Changes tonight and we adopt, when I say we, the, the board. Uh, you know, recommends approval with the following amendments. Then would the process be that you would? If, if staff supported, what would the process be when you take it to council? And then is this an, another one where um, this is not an area plan? But wh- what is this back and forth process? Or does it, you just take our stuff and it goes to council and they may or may not adopt it?
Yeah, we, we would convey whatever the board recommends to council. Um, I think staff has some discretion to make changes. If we feel like something, you know, fixes something or makes sense, we could include that in the ordinance. That goes to council and we would tell them what change was made. Or we might just list what was recommended and then bring it up as a key issue for council. And then council can then decide whether something should be added. And then um, if they then make a motion, we would. To incorporate certain things, we would take it to a third reading with those changes. Or if it's something that is more complicated, requires more public outreach, requires more analysis. It might be something that informs a future work program item.
Yeah. If you didn't illustrate that point a little bit too, uh, I appreciate Carl's explanation. So kind of the three different scenarios, just to give an example if it's helpful. You know, if through the discussion, we say, I'm just using fake information. Uh, there's discussion by board members of, oh, this particular clause says, and shall be six of something. But later in the paragraph, it's not clear that that's referring back to that. We may all agree, yeah, that, that's not real clear. We'll go ahead and just make that change and have that as part of the ordinance change. That's one level change. Another are the basic, you know, recommendations that you're bringing forward. We recommend approval of this uh, ordinance instead of law with these changes. Those eh, as Carl indicated, we would bring forward it would be the board's decision to, or council's decision. Whether to eh, take those or not. And then the third level would be. If you were to make substantive uh, recommendations or ones that are really changing the scope. Uh, of, of a site. So um. Or, or scope of the project. Uh, an example that would be, hey, rather than these five districts, we should think there should be eight districts. That apply, this rule applies to, then we would go probably to council and say, here's the recommendation. And if you follow that recommendation, we, we would um, submit that additional public outreach as needed. And that's kind of what I was speaking to at the top of the meeting, of the scope, scale and, and just making that distinction for the board.
Can I call a plea real quick?
Go ahead Laura.
Mark, I don't know if this was part of your question. I really appreciate what Carl and Brad outlined. And I think at the base of that is an understanding that uh, unlike sub-community plans or area plans. Council and planning board are not required by code to adopt this identical versions. So they don't have to listen to us. We're just making recommendations at this stage. And there are various ways that staff can, can um, facilitate the process of council considering our recommendations. And what the implications of those recommendations might be. But council at the end of the day is the deciding body. We are not.
Right, that, a- all of that is helpful and, and, and clarifying. And so to, to move us forward, what I'm going to suggest is that um, we put a main motion on the floor. We begin with amendments, but as staff looks at our amendments. If, 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 if a proposed amendment is of the variety, oh, that's really kind of an oversight typo-y sort of. Thing that you're capturing our intention and, and we should have done it that way. Then you tell us that and we can just dispense with a lot of debate and, and, and away we go. Um, and at the other end of the spectrum, if you want to add uh, weight to our deliberation. And say, well, if you do that, we're going to go, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna. Likely would delay and create more outreach, et cetera. So I, I think your, your frank uh, input as we go along here would be very helpful.
Mark, I have a, I have a, a, a question about the kind of overarching that you just said out there. Wouldn't there be an option instead of a motion to make a recommendation? That we're just making recommendations?
Well.
Because we're not.
I think that's a distinction with, without a difference. Um, we, we are by, we are, we are ma- the, the prime mo- the main motion. Is going to be to adopt the ordinance. The amendments are going to be our recommendations that, that the RR zone. Be counted as X, Y, and Z rather than A, B, and C. Okay? Those are all recommendations. We, since, and as Laura pointed out, we are not the um. Uh, actual deciding body. We are going to make these recommendations.
Right. So it's motions to recommend.
So, and, and, and staff is going to have some influence on whether or not. Uh, let's, we'll be frank about it. Staff has influence on council as, as to whether or not they adopt our recommendation. So um, I, I, I think, I think they're all recommendations.
Right.
At, at this point.
So the difference would have been a motion for a condition versus a motion for a recommendation.
Right, yeah. We're, we're not conditioning anything.
No, we're not.
Okay, Kurt?
I just wanted to clarify that the main motion is a recommendation. It reads, plan or recommend that city council adopt. It's all recommendation at this.
Yes, all, that's eh, tonight, eh, this is not quasi judicial, this is legislative. And we are not, we are not the, we cannot uh, adopt an ordinance. Uh, so we can only recommend adoption or not of an ordinance. So, okay, with that, um, Laura's got her hand up.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Great, I'd like to hear that.
Uh, planning board, uh, I move that planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance A five nine nine. To amend Title Nine Land Use Code, BRC nineteen eighty-one, related to the site review process. And intensity, form and bulk, use, parking and subdivision standards concerning affordable and modest sized housing. And setting forth related details.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have uh.
Two seconds?
Who wants it more? Thumb wrestle.
All right, um, uh, Laura, since you're the main motion maker. Um, uh, it's your, your privilege to.
Gosh.
No, that, but I, eh, anyway, you can, you can decline. But, but I think, I think it's um, it's a, it's an appropriate time should you want to.
Uh, first of all, who's the official seconder? Just for Devin's records. Kurt, ML, do, do you care who's the seconder?
That's what we were trying.
I, I thought, I thought ML came out of the gates quicker, so.
Kurt, are you okay with that? Okay, ML, you're the official seconder for Devin's records. Uh, I'll just speak to the motion to say, this is the second time I have heard this presentation. I heard it also at HAB where it was enthusiastically welcomed. Um, I think people are, are, and I agree with this, um, are really appreciative of staff's work here. To do exactly what city council asked, which is look, in the code, look at what are the barriers to getting the housing types? That we know we need more of in this city. Um, you know, eh, the, the charge was not to uh. Figure out fixes to a, um, permanently affordable housing, but to, to try to figure out ways to get more of the housing types. That we know that we are missing, like townhouses, duplexes, townhomes. Figure out what in our code is driving us to have this barbell with single family housing on one side. And uh, large apartment buildings on the other and try to help relieve those barriers. So we can, the market can start to fill in some of those things. And the market doing that, as Carl explained at the very beginning of the presentation, will provide additional inclusionary housing. Especially with some of the changes to our inclusionary housing ordinance that Michelle Allen and um. Uh, Jay Sugnet are going to bring to us later where uh, we fixed the loophole where single family redevelopment. When you knock down a single family home and rebuild it, um, or add units in that way. That it's subject to the inclusionary housing benefit, right? So, um, or eh, eh, there's other things that are going to come with that. But we are going to get inclusionary housing out of the market, adding more units, um, one way or the other. So there's no guaranteed affordability out of building duplexes, triplexes and townhomes. But we get some natural inclusionary housing benefit out of it. So anyway, I just want to say I'm excited by the work that staff has done. I think this is a great um, uh, ordinance that has been brought in front of us. I suspect that the changes that my colleagues are going to bring are largely going to be to encourage going farther. And I look forward to staff's reaction and guidance to us and input on how much of that might be feasible without slowing this down. And having to go back for more uh, community outreach, which is an appropriate thing to do when the scope changes significantly. So um, I'm looking forward to the conversation. As always, uh, very excited to see what my colleagues will bring forth. I love the diversity in this group and some folks may have concerns with things that they, they don't want to see go forward. So uh, let's get on with that.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. Um, and we can discuss this uh, further. Or if anyone has uh, amendments or um, amendments they want to propose, now would be an appropriate time. Kurt?
Yeah, I have several amendments that I would like to at least bring forward for uh, some quick discussion. To see if they would fly at all and to see what, what staff thinks of them. Do you want me to send them to Devin first?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's, eh, and, and, and again, I, I, I know I've been an advocate of formality in this process. But let's, I, I think one thing we could do is send them to Devon, put them on the screen. And see if there are any that staff immediately says, oh, sure, that is, that's a. Correction change that we would just adopt and, or that one's hell no, you guys go ahead. But you know, you're, you're not, you're not going to hear a bunch of applause from us. And what might be in the middle?
I think that would be a very nice process to put up Kurt's suggestions and then let staff talk through what would be the implications of each. And if they see that as compatible with the ordinance or going beyond the scope.
And Kurt, I think once you've done that and Devon has them up, um, you should know that you. Have the uh, right at any time to say, well, I'm moving this forward anyway and see if you get a second, et cetera. Okay? So eh, eh, while this is all collegial, eh, there is still a process here. And, and I just want you to know that you have those, uh, you have, you have the tools of, of procedure available to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I guess le- le- let me talk through. I guess, let, sh- should I just describe then one by one and we can get quick responses? Is that what you're hoping for? Okay, so the first one relates to the site review threshold. So what is the threshold beyond which a project needs to go to site review? Currently, a number of these thresholds are framed, framed in terms of number of units. So in a lot of cases, for a lot of zones, if you're building more than five units, for example, you need to go to site review. If you're building more than twenty units, you need to go through, through both concept review and site review. My concern about that, in the context of this project, which is to remove barriers to creating more affordable housing. And to dis- to, to stop incentivizing larger, less affordable. Uh, units instead of more smaller, modest sized, more affordable units. My, my concern is that, for example, somebody wants to build a, a project. They can either build four, five units or four units. If they build five units, they're going to be smaller. If they're going to be, if they're going to build four units, they're going to be bigger. And most likely more expensive. If they build five, then they have to go through, through site review. Site review is, as we know, a fairly difficult, time consuming and expensive process. And it's also risky, right? And so I, my, my concern is that in a lot of cases, a developer, a potential developer would say. No, I don't want to do deal with the site review thing. A developer, a potential developer would say, no, I don't want to, to deal with the site review thing. I'm just going to do fewer, larger units and avoid site review. So my suggestion is to replace those per unit. Uh, or no, sorry, number of unit based throw up site, site review thresholds with. Equivalence in terms of floor area. And I'm speculating, I guess, I'm putting out there that the appropriate multiplier. Would be about fifteen hundred square feet per unit. So where it says five, the threshold is five units. It would become seventy five hundred square feet of floor, total floor area. Where it says twenty units, it would. Uh, uh, become thirty thousand. Square feet of floor area and so on. So that is proposal number one.
Can we ask staff to react one by one? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
That would help me because I can't retain it too long.
So. This is my professional opinion. Um, I'll allow my colleagues to jump in if they have a different take. Uh, but I'll just offer kind of my thoughts on this. So with number one, um. I like the logic. Because we are trying to move away from discouraging by number of units. And by changing it to floor area, based on an assumed square footage of fifteen hundred square feet. Um, you get a total of, you know, twenty seven thousand or thirty thousand. Uh, that aligns with some of the square footage thresholds that we have in other zones. So I think for those reasons, I, I think, um, I, I, I like the logic of it. Um, this is relatively new to me. We haven't had a chance to think about this in depth or. Obviously, our job is to look for any kind of unintended consequences that might come from this type of change. My only, I think, reservation at this point is, would this allow a project? To go through that would have otherwise required site review that maybe should have. Required site review that people are going to look at and go, that would have been. A higher quality or a better looking project had it gone through site review and we changed. The threshold so it didn't require site review anymore. I, I'd have to think about that more. Um. But I, 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 I like the logic of that beyond that.
Yeah, given staff's response. Uh. And Laura, to your point of rather than, uh. Go down through the list and then backtrack to that, uh, Kurt. Would you want to, um, make this as a motion to amend? And, um, and then we'll debate it and, and vote on it and then we can go on to the next item.
Yes, so I move.
May I, Kurt, before you do that, can I make a friendly suggestion?
Yes.
Rather than giving a definitive number like fifteen hundred square feet, could we rewrite it to say? Uh, with floor area at a multiplier, uh, to be determined by staff? Because I think we're on the same page with staff about the intent. And it sounds like fifteen hundred was kind of a, a bit of a wag on, on your part of like just trying to put a number in there that might make sense. And I would trust staff to find an appropriate number if they do some calculations and figure that that's not the right number.
Yeah, wo- would staff be comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the recommendation could be that. Um, the thresholds be reconsidered to not use dwelling units as, as a threshold and. Come up with an alternative floor area. That would be appropriate. I, I think that would be fine as a recommendation.
Okay, so, well, I would like to move, uh, an amendment. To replace the unit counts in table two dash two, site review threshold table. With floor area at a multiplier of fifteen hundred square feet per unit. Or as determined appropriate by staff.
I would second that.
Is that, is that language clear enough, Carl and Laurel?
I think from my, from my perspective, I think Carl's language made more sense to me relative to. Consider rather than use a word like replace. Um, only because I, I think that what I heard from Carl was. This, the logic makes sense. We just need to think about it. Um, and so for us to direct replacement with that kind of directive, I just, I just feel like. I, I think we can leave it in staff's court to consider it. Um, and if they think the logic is sound and they don't think the unintended consequences are. Then, then, then they can move it forward. But if they come up with something that. You know, all of a sudden they're like, ah, ah, this is not a good idea. Um, I don't want our directive to be replaced. At least that's my perspective on it. I, I could get behind that, but I just have a hard time with a, with a hard. Affirmative action like that.
Kurt, go ahead.
Yeah, and I would be totally comfortable with that. I guess I just didn't take up that language because I wasn't sure that I could repeat it verbatim. Um, so that's totally fine. That, that is absolutely the intent.
Um, I, I'll only say this, I, I, um. When. Let's just say we, we left the word replace there. And staff goes away and then, uh, they discover a problem. Uh, it's certainly well within their purview and their responsibility. To say, planning board recommended this, that, because again, we are only making recommendations. Planning board recommended replacing this table with this other thing. We discovered this problem and we recommend that you don't adopt planning board's recommendation. I, I think that's, that's part of, and I, and during the occupancy discussion, um. I, I won't say that our recommendations were marginalized, but they certainly were emphasized in that, uh, discussion at council. So. I, I, anyway, I think staff has latitude, given that all we're doing is making a recommendation. Anyway, and I actually think that clarity of words of replace. Should, i- i- is, is, is a preferred option for me, uh, in the motion. M L?
Um, yeah, I kind of, I kind of like the thinking that George put on the table that if we put consider. The unit counts, et cetera, et cetera. Then staff doesn't have to yea or nay a recommendation. They can consider that and find, you know, the appropriate way to deal with it rather than saying, no, we don't agree with that. We don't agree to replace it or. I, I, I think built in some flexibility so that the recommendation has an option to be flexible.
Laura, I'm going to jump past you for just a second here and go to Brad if that's all right.
Yeah, I was just going to encourage the board to not worry too much about that language on number one. I think the spirit of it's caught and we understand. The nature of it, uh. Mark, you're absolutely right. If there's a fatal flaw, you know, we're not going to fail to bring that to the council's, uh, attention. So. Appreciate the sensitivity around it, but also want to make room for the other discussion then.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going, Laura, I'm going to come right to you. I'm just going to say. So we had a motion, we had a second, and so, a- and, and I'm, uh, I'm, I'm just going to encourage us. That the input has been great. But, uh, we do have a motion and a second, and unless the motion maker wants to withdraw or whatever. Let, let's focus on, uh, on the motion as it stands now. Unless we want to amend that motion and we can, we can amend the motion if we do it without objection, you know, someone can say. I, I, I would replace re- replace this word with something else. And then I would poll to see if there was an objection to that. But Laura, go ahead.
Uh, uh, I think if the harshness of the language is, is a concern, we could just say, consider replacing unit counts. And, and I see George is thumbing up on that. So if that's okay with the motion maker and the second, which would be Kurt and Mark. To say, consider replacing unit counts. It seems like an easy change that is consistent with all of our intent.
That is okay with me.
I'll concede. Okay, okay, so. Um. Having now, uh, uh, trying to move us on here, having now replaced, uh, consider without objection. Replace the word replace with consider without objection. Uh, do I hear an objection to that particular change to that motion? Okay, then, um, without objection, I'm going to call the question and we're going to, uh, vote on this. Uh, Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Um, excellent work, Kurt.
Thank you. So the next one relates to the intensity standards in table eight dash one. There are some minimum lot area requirements. For some of these higher intensity zones, the I, I S, R M, R H five, the B C zones, I M. B T two, I G, B R one. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have made the motion. My, I move that, uh. Council consider in table eight dash one, intensity standards. Eliminating the minimum lot area for I S one, R M, R H five. B C, I M, B T two, I G, and B R one zones. And eliminating the minimum lot area per dwelling unit for B T two zone. And if I could speak on it now, um, so there's these minimum lot areas. To me, I, the, all of these are really, um, uh, they're governed by the F A Rs. That's how the intensity is governed, not by the minimum lottery in R R and R E and R L. The intensity is governed by the minimum lottery. And so I'm certainly not opposing to change. The mi- the minimum lottery in those zones. But in these zones. It seems like it's just an additional constraint on creating small. Buildings on small sites. So for example, in the I M zone. The minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet, which isn't that big. But say somebody wants to make a very small, you know, a little repli- repair shop. On their own property, on a small parcel of land of five thousand square feet or something. Currently. As I understand it, that is not allowed. And the, 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 the total built area would still be regulated by the floor area. So you're not, it's not increasing the amount, the floor area ratio. So it's not increasing the amount of. Building that you can build. It is, but the, as it currently stands. It is prohibiting very small scale development. And to me, that's problem. The second part relates to the minimum lot area per dwelling unit for the B T two zone. We've. In, in the proposal, uh, in this, in this ordinance. We've eliminated the lot area per dwelling unit for a lot of these other zones where we're regulating by floor area. Floor area ratio and, but for some reason that was not done in B T two. And it seems appropriate to me to be consistent and also do that in B T two. Again, uh, we, the goal is to move towards regulating by floor area ratio. So that's the intent.
Okay, we got a little, um. Our procedure was going to be to discuss it, then decide if we're going to make a motion or not, but you've made the motion and, um. And so I'm, I'm just going to go out of procedure a little bit and ask staff to respond to this. As to kind of which, which sort of category, uh, what their thoughts are on this, and then we can. Seek a second or, or actually modify this or whatever. So let's look for staff's response to this.
Yeah, obviously I haven't had a lot of time to consider this in a lot of depth. Um, I think my original reaction to it was a little bit of concern, just. You know, if we get rid of minimum lot sizes, it could result in subdivisions that create. Small lots that may not be buildable. That was my, uh, uh, initial. Concern, but the more I think about it, when you look at the intensity standards. Um, it's like half or maybe even more than half. The zones don't have a minimum lot size and that hasn't necessarily been a problem. Um, I see the point. Of getting rid of the minimum lot area. I think the, when I look at these zones. I could see that being done for most of these zones probably without any issue. Um, the only one that gives me a little bit of concern is R M. Uh, just because we don't really want somebody to create a lot. That ends up being too small to support the density requirement that still exists for that zone. I don't think that that would be the case for the other zones. So I guess my recommendation would be like, yes, on all these zones except for R M. And then, um, the point on B T two, after I've thought about that, I agree. That, uh, we're already doing B T one. Um, and the fact that B T two, it wasn't in the scope originally, but because. B T two already has an F A R limit, we're not going to be seeing a change. In the visual, you know, intensity. So in the spirit of. Of the other zones, I could see getting rid of the minimum lot area per dwelling unit in that zone.
Ca- Carl, uh, just a question on that. Uh, uh, I mean. As a practical matter. What are we, I mean, are, 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 are minimum lot areas a real issue here? I, because, because I. I do see your point from a development standpoint, from a city standpoint. I, I can't imagine we want people subdividing lots to the point where they become unmanageable or unbuiltable or just, just a. A, a nuisance of a certain size. The question is like. Practically, like, are we really accomplishing much here or, but with this amendment? Um. Or is this?
I mean, I think like Kurt said, I, I think it's kind of an additional gargle in there that may not necessarily need to be there. For all zones. And I'm only saying that because there's so. You know, if you look at the intensity standards, you can see that there are already a bunch of zones that don't have minimum lot area. Um, so I, I, I think my concern kind of went away the more I thought about it.
Okay. Do you think we're actually gaining anything by doing this?
I think as, as a matter of simplification and one less thing to check, I, I, that's appealing.
Okay.
Kurt, would, um, and, and now I'm a little confused. Carl, are you still? Concerned about R M or as you spoke about it, did R M become less of a concern?
No, I, 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 I'm still concerned about R M. I'm not as concerned about the other zones.
So Kurt, uh. Would you be willing to? Uh, Laura, do you want to, you want to speak to this?
Well, I guess I just wanted to ask, uh, so two things. One, I wanted to ask Carl. Do you feel like you need more time to think about this before we start wordsmithing it? Like, we could just. Do the same thing here that we did above and say, consider eliminating.
Yeah, I, I'd be comfortable with a, a bullet point that says, consider eliminating the minimum lot size in these zones. I think that would be fine.
And you'd be comfortable with that even if we leave R M in there and then you could make a recommendation that. R M should come out or would you prefer that we do that tonight?
Have more analysis time before the city council public hearing and make a, you know, recommendation on it.
So, so you'd be comfortable if we just say, consider eliminating and then leave the rest of it alone?
Yeah.
Okay. Kurt, and your second, I think it was Mark, was, does that change work for you?
Actually, we don't have a second yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, but Kurt.
Yeah, so Kurt, you, you, you actually, a- at this point, since we don't have a second, and maybe I'm not doing this correctly, but. I'm going to say, would you, uh, be willing to change, uh, or add the word consider? In there, uh, and then just leave everything else as is?
I believe when I read it as a motion, which I wasn't even supposed to do, I did put in consider.
Oh.
Uh, but let, I, let me read it again. If that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
I move that planning board recommend that city council consider. In table eight dash one, intensity standards. Eliminating the minimum lot area for I S one, R M, R H five. B C, I M, oh, B C, B T two, I G, and B R one zones. And eliminating the minimum lot area per dwelling unit for B T two zone.
That I can second. Okay, is there, um, any more discussion or questions on this particular nu- motion number two? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yeah.
M L? ML.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that's two. Okay. Kurt, you still have the floor and and so let let's go ahead and again this time. A quick little discussion, get staff's uh response and then we can decide if you can decide if you're making a motion or not.
Yeah, I can't believe I forgot our procedure already.
That's okay.
Uh so the next one uh is to just to extend this same principle. Of moving from. From unit based restrictions to floor area restrictions for RMX one. So currently for RMX one, there's a minimum lot area of so six thousand. Square feet and the minimum lot area per dwelling unit for six thousand square feet. There's also an existing floor area maximum. That is part of the compatible development rules, which ranges from point seven four, I believe. To point four two. And so. My suggestion, which may not be popular, is to ba- basically do the same kind of thing for RMX one. That we're doing for these other zone districts and move from this. Per unit based calculation to a total floor area based calculation.
Earl?
Okay, so my reaction, my reaction to this one is that I would have strong concerns about doing this. The reason is that RMX one is the neighborhoods that surround downtown. They were originally built as single family homes and then it was. Uh zoned, you know, upzoned basically to allow. Uh apartments for for a time and then it was changed, the zoning was changed to a lower intensity. And it rendered much of the of the properties uh nonconforming. It's a very. Complex zone. It's got a huge range of densities. Uh we had looked at this originally and because of those concerns had not included it in the scope. Um I look at RMX one a bit like I do, you know, RL. Zones where there is a cap in the BVCP of density at twenty dwelling units per acre. So I'm concerned that. This change could actually have a lot of unintended consequences. It would render a lot of properties. Potentially conforming that might be better kept at nonconforming. I think I just think a lot more analysis. Would need to be focused on this zone and I also hesitate. Because there 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 have not been any outreach to these neighborhoods. You know, this hasn't been a suggested change through the scope. Uh the course of the project. So tho- those are the reasons I I wouldn't recommend this one.
Kurt.
Uh well, I would like to hear whether the ju- the general sense of the board, whether. The board would be interested in continuing to recommend this as a consideration to council.
Laura.
Being very much not an expert on this and knowing that Carl deals with this day in and day out. I take his concerns very seriously, so I probably would not be inclined to move this one forward. Um knowing that Carl has such strong concerns about it.
I also just saw. Popper thumbs up and George, or did you say something?
I disagreed with Laura.
Okay.
Thank you. So it sounds like that one is not going to go forward. Um the next one is to.
So you're you're just, you're just, sorry, sorry Kurt, you're just removing that. You're not making a motion on that.
I am not making a motion on that. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Devin.
The next one is to address part of what we were talking about in relation to uh. To diagonal plaza and potentially other areas where we're now moving to a floor area ratio based. Uh constraint on on the intensity of development and. I have. Great respect for the expertise of the of staff in coming up with those floor ratios, but. It seems to me that there there may need to be some flexibility, some. Uh provision for additional review to allow for higher FAR in certain circumstances. Such as was done in a diagonal plaza where it was built out at one point, I mean, it will be. Built out, it was approved at one point seven something and under these rules, it would only be allowed one point five. So it probably, the project would not happen under these rules is is my understanding. So I'm trying to provide some mechanism for. A review, a site review in this case, to allow that. To allow some additional floor area ratio, but you know, with the usual constraints of site review where the the. Uh planning board or city council can say, no, that is not appropriate, but in certain other circumstances. It could say, yes, it is appropriate. This is getting getting us what we want to have. So that's the intent to just allow some flexibility with guardrails.
Yeah, question of clarification. Uh so for Kurt, I assume that this is limited to the zones that are already being considered by this ordinance. Except for R R RE and L RL. You say it allow this point five additional residential FAR with site review. I assume you're limiting that to the zones that we're already looking at in this ordinance, not all zones citywide.
Yeah, you're right. It's the zones that have a floor area ratio that are that are constrained by a floor area. Yes, I should have been clearer.
And then uh one question I have is i- is the point five, would that be like subject to? Additional community benefit requirements?
Uh that seems like it would be very appropriate. Yes.
I guess my my reaction to this is um. I understand wanting to add that flexibility to the code. Um I hesitate because. I feel like we'd have to really look at each zone as to what the implications might be. You know, in some cases. Point five could be a doubling of the allowable FAR in some zones or or up to a. A third greater. Um you know, and there it could set the expectation that while it says it in the code, you can ask for it. So. You're gonna get it through site review and if we don't have those guardrails of exactly one that would be granted. Um I'm a little concerned of, you know, unintended consequences from that. Um I think, you know, tagging on community benefit would at least. Get some benefit back to the city, but we we could end up seeing some projects that appear overbuilt based on their context. Um at point five, again, I think we would need more time to analyze zone by zone to see if it makes sense.
Laura.
Wild idea, which may or may not be acceptable to the motion maker, but Carl. Would it be more acceptable rather than giving a hard number like point five? Additional residential FAR, could you say an additional ten percent? Residential FAR or some percentage increase so that you wouldn't get like a doubling, but you would get some known percentage of increase? Would that be more acceptable? And if so, is there a number that you would suggest?
I mean, my sense is that if it's a. Percentage of what is allowed, that I that would make me more comfortable and and if it did require community benefit. Um at least there's something get, you know, that would be. Given in return for it, that that makes sense to me.
Kurt.
Thank you, Laura, for that suggestion and I actually was originally thinking in that in those terms. And then I, for simplicity, basically. I went back to this point five uh residential FAR. Uh I would also be, so I would fully support that. Uh I would also be open to just. Something much more vague saying uh requesting that that um. That there'd be consideration of some mechanism to allow for higher FAR when appropriate or something to that effect. If if people would be more comfortable with that.
George.
Yeah, um to to me, this this goes, this goes pretty far. I I think. I think you need community engagement on something like this. This is a. This is a big bump, you know, just kind of hidden meatball that we would be putting in there. Um so I I would be opposed to either percentages or or some. Amount of FAR without um without a whole lot more um community engagement around it.
Okay, um given the 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 nature of our. Board tonight, which is uh five being present and um. For needing to approve any motion. I'm going to ask, is there any? And I'm not trying to key someone one way or the other. Is there any other board member? That has strong feelings about this uh with Laura's percentage or? Not here now that that would either cut this off or we would go ahead with a motion.
I guess I'd wanna ask Carl, would would you want us to? What do you think about George's idea that this is something that should perhaps be considered with additional community outreach is? Do you feel that this rises to that threshold if we changed it to say something like some percentage rather than a point five? And we added your idea of community benefit? Would you still think that this rises to the threshold of additional community outreach? Cause I think that's a that's a concern that. You know, we've often heard raised.
I mean, it it kind of depends on the percentage. Um I think in my. Thinking, you know, ten percent. Allows for a marginal increase that might make sense in some cases, but yeah, I mean, I think. Being that this is being introduced this late in the process, it it does kind of give me some concern. Um that this concept hasn't been talked about before and we've been at this for months. So I guess I'm kind of erring on the side of caution there.
ML.
Um in answer to your question, Mark, I think I would respect the trepidation that Carl is putting out there. And um this might not be something that we should try to put forth.
Kurt, the ball's in uh your court as to whether or not you want to move forward with a motion or or not.
I would like to move forward with motion even though it will fail, uh just to get it on the record.
Then um go ahead and uh make the motion with whether you want a. Uh an FAR number or a percentage of FAR and then uh I would suggest include the um. Uh community benefit. As well. Okay, carry on, sorry.
And and can I also just make another friendly suggestion is um you you could also make a recommendation that this be considered in the BVCP update?
Okay, thank you. Uh so I move that uh city council consider allowing. Additional residential FAR with site review. Uh subject to uh to community benefit requirements. Except in RR, RE and RL zones. So I did not include the number of point five in there. Devin, if you're following along. So I I eliminated that. So I just said. Consider allowing. And then. An additional. Residential FAR with site review subject to community benefit requirements.
Would it be, would it be FAR bonus? It feels like it's missing a word after FAR. Additional residential FAR. Like an additional ratio. I I don't know, it anyway.
Well, I Carl, I I think the intent is clear, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So so Devin, could you change the beginning of the sentence to say, consider allowing? And then delete up to Anne.
Thank you.
And is it subject to community benefit requirements or subject to additional community benefit requirements? Carl.
I think it would just be community benefit requirements.
Okay.
I'll second this motion. So we have a motion and a second. Uh Kurt, you wanna speak to it now that it's been edited?
Uh well, no, not really. I just wanted to add some more flexibility in there. So I think that. It it at least will convey, even if it fails, it conveys, I think, the intent that I had there.
All right, uh I'm gonna go ahead and call this one. Uh we'll go the other way now. Uh George?
Uh no, with with this with a strong note that anything like this would require some serious community outreach.
ML.
Uh no, I think I will trust um. Staff's instincts.
Laura.
I'm gonna say yes because it says consider allowing and because I know that staff will appropriately advise council. Whether this would require more community outreach and what that should look like. So I'm gonna say yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
And I'm a yes for the reasons that Laura has uh. Know that so it.
I think it failed.
Yeah, it fails.
It fails two to three.
Yes.
Wait a second, is that right? Because Mark and Kurt and I were all yes.
It fails three to two.
It fails three to two. It has to have a vote of four or more.
Right, fails three to two. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
A little backwards, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you for being with me. And then the last one really is cap- trying to capture Sarah's recommendation. Which is to track the affordability of units constructed. Uh under this revised code versus those that are constructed. The way they would be can uh constructed currently, just to see, are we getting more affordability? Are we not? You know, I think data is always useful. So I liked her recommendation and I want to bring it forward.
I'm just gonna say, I think this could be phrased initially as a as a question for staff of. What tools, how would we, without any motions or recommendations from planning board? Uh when we adopt this this ordinance. How would we track? What would we track? How would we track it? And is is this necessary or is this actually something uh that would be beneficial to everybody to state? That we're going to track this or is it creating this giant burden? So. Back to staff on on what your thoughts are about this.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how we would do this. It seems like with every project that comes in, like staff would have to do. A calculation based on today's code and then figure out what the applicant proposed and and compare them. Um so it's kind of a interesting additional task to. And I don't know, you know, if it would be, you know, with permits or site review or how we would. Instruct our staff to add another task. Relative to this, I I think we'd have to think about it more about how this would be beneficial.
And if I can piggyback on that, um. You know, if this were adopted as part of the code update, which I I would have to say it's unclear how you would even write that in the code. But if it were adopted as a a requirement. Uh it it's not clear to what end this tracking is either, other than just interesting information. It essentially just creates a. Indefinite in perpetuity research project for the department that implies some sort of. Information for decision making, but doesn't. It doesn't directly do that. Um I I I think I, I think we understand. I, I, I think I, I think we understand as staff and appreciate the intent, which is how do we know Codex is going to do what we envision it doing? Um, I think that that remains the purview of our comprehensive planning division uh, in doing research relative to policy changes moving forward. You know, looking in the rearview mirror once we have existing policies, but trying to track that in real time over time, uh, is unclear what the benefit of that would be. And, and then in addition to that, all the administrative uncertainties, uh, that Carl just spoke to. Um, I, I, I would be hard pressed to know how we would actually administer that in practical terms.
ML?
So I wonder if there would be, um, thank you for your point, Brad. Um, I wonder if there would be any value in just tracking, uh, the removal of regulatory, regulatory barriers relative to the amount of, um, housing being added that could not have been added before. Is there an increase in housing that would happen? Once you remove these barriers or is it pretty much on task the way it has been historically?
Yeah, I guess that's the point it was making. I, I, I don't know what it means to simply track something like this. I don't know that that's.
Right.
An, an easy thing to actually execute on.
Right.
And, and again, as an, and I don't mean this pejoratively or dismissively, but as an academic question, it, it certainly has merit and, and I understand that, you know, where that type of information is useful. As an operational element, that's very difficult. As something that we might use again, looking in the rearview mirror to make, uh, to do research leading up to things like an update to a comprehensive plan or a sub area plan or, or those types of things. That is familiar territory. Sometimes consultants do it, you know, or maybe we do that in-house. Uh, but that's a snapshot in time looking backwards, not trying to track things in real time.
Oh, I see. Uh, yeah, cause he uses the word tracking. Yeah, I think it would be, it would. I'm speaking more to the point of, are we meeting our goal? You know, removing regulatory barriers and did it, did it in fact create more housing? And I'm hearing you say, Brad, that staff does that in any case as they collect data and, um, see what the impacts were.
Yeah, I think I'm saying, you know, retrospectively, we're, we're always going to try to do that research, much like Carl has done research on existing conditions and peer communities and things like that. But again, to actually program that as part of ongoing operations is kind of a whole different animal. And, and again, I, I, I think we're all sympathetic to the question and answer of, are code, any specific code changes actually affect or not? I'm just suggesting that if we try to operationalize that question for every code that comes along, uh, that, that's just not, not really the purview of an operational, you know, of operations of the department. Uh, if we envision, um, you know, changes that were made 10 years ago and, uh, well, in occupancy, for example, and again, try to track that in real time. That's much different than just looking back at historical data. And, and again, if, if there's any staff who, uh, you know, can say, no, there's, there's clearly a way we could do this. I'm certainly happy to be corrected, but I think our first blush was, it's unclear how we would actually implement this.
I think we, we do track number of dwelling units and we do track, you know, units that are subject to IH. So you could, over the years, like, look, you know, if there's an increase in the number of housing or the increase in the percentage of IH units. But again, there's other market forces that are going to come into play, um, on those, those numbers.
Laura?
Um, so I, I deeply sympathize with staff's position of it's unclear how you would track it. And I don't think that we're in a position to design something tonight that tells them how to track it. Um, and I, I'm hearing from staff that they also, uh, agree with the board's interest in understanding the data and in analyzing the impact of this policy at some point in the future, when we're perhaps considering expanding the policy or doing more to try to encourage middle housing. Um, and so I, I would be comfortable just expressing a, a strong, not as an official recommendation or a motion to amend, but just expressing our strong interest in knowing what does happen as a result of this change at some point in the future, when we might be considering, uh, additional similar changes. Like, did we get more duplexes and triplexes and townhomes on those parcels that were identified as, uh, potentially being opened up for duplexes and triplexes and townhomes? And for the zones where we have reduced barriers, um, to, to creating smaller units, did we get on average more smaller units? You know, I think, I think our intent is clear of why we're making these changes. And I think I would leave it to staff's future creativity to think about, how do we do that look back that Brad is, uh, is describing without us trying to design that here and now? I, I don't think we have any divergence of interest here. Uh, it's just a question of, uh, this is not an easy task for us to envision right now, uh, of how staff would do it.
Thanks Laura. George?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with what Laura said. I will say that, that the, the one thing, and I think the, the cognitive dissonance that, that we, um, that Sarah might be feeling, I feel the same similarly, is we have something that's labeled as creating, uh, uh, something to create affordability. And then we have no metrics to, um, actually understand what we're doing. And if we're doing something that's at all positive and, and in elastic market with nearly endless demand for housing. And so, um, I agree with Laura because I, I also understand from staff's perspective. But it, it's a, it, it, we, we have, we have something in front of us that's, that's called, you know, an affordable ordinance. Um, that really does not deal with affordability directly. It's dealing with housing types that, um, some post, postulate that may impact affordability. But there's no, there, there, there's no sort of requirement on data or, or tools to help us. Um, and so all we have is a lot of a, opinion, um, which is not necessarily in, in gut, uh, and some thoughts about what's happened in other cities, positive and negative. Um, so I like Laura's idea on, on, on something related to that, um, as far as tracking and understanding and look backs and understanding, we can't put that directly in the, um, in the code, but at least, uh, putting some kind of, um, ask on, on, on all of us, uh, staff and others that are putting this in place to, to really understand, are we, are we doing anything here? Um, I think that's important.
Laura? Did you still have? Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'll, um, I'll, I'll just comment that, uh, I, I feel everyone here, right? You, you don't want to create a make work project, but at the same time, if you can't, uh, measure and track something, you can't fix it, you can't improve it. Um, and so, uh, I, I, I feel everyone here and I'm, uh, I'm, I think I'm going to come down on the side of, um, acknowledging the difficulty of tracking it, but, uh, let's see what Kurt has to say.
Well, I appreciate everyone's input, staff's input and fellow board members' input, and I agree with all of it. Uh, given the difficulties that are obvious from the, an operational standpoint, I'm not going to be bringing this forward as a motion, but I think staff understands the, and shares the, uh, the, the concept behind this and motivation. And I'm sure that we will be gathering this data at some point going forward. So thank you.
Great, thanks.
Hey, Mark, um, uh, we got 10 minutes left. Uh, can, can you, can, can, can we kind of do a round robin real quick and just see how many more things we've got going? If we can time cap this, if we can come to some agreement to extend this, but not forever, um, type of thing.
Okay. Uh, that's a, that's an excellent suggestion, George. So, um, uh, we have, uh, completed a main motion and three amendments. Um, George, uh, you have one in the chat and I haven't, I'm, I'm gonna deal with that next. Okay? That would be the next item. Um, I have a, a couple that I think are, are on the technical side like this, that, uh, could be responded to staff pretty quickly. So I'm going to say it's 10:20 now.
Hang on, Mark. What about ML? ML, do you have amendments that you want to bring forward? I do not.
I do, and I just sent it to Devin.
Okay.
It's just one and it's a very, it's a very simple, straightforward.
So, double, three, four. Um, if, if we can do this at, uh, five to six minutes a pop, we could be done by 11 or earlier, um, that's possible if we're, if we're pretty snappy. And I can, I can try to move things along a little quicker now that we've processed down. What's that?
I'm okay with 11 if everybody else is, and maybe we just try and move it forward and if we don't get it to 11, at least we'll get close and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
I think we do need a formal motion to extend the meeting.
George, would you like to do that?
Sure. I'll, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting, um, to 11.
Okay. And, uh, uh, so we have a motion and a second. Um, let's just go ahead and vote on that. Um, Kurt? Laura?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, and I'll just, uh, I, I know Brad had said the other night that, you know, you guys serve at our pleasure, et cetera. However, if, if you have some objection, I'd love to hear it now. Otherwise, we're going to keep going. Okay. All right. Um, George, uh, uh, so George has put a, um, a motion, uh, uh, ML, is yours? Oh, that was from earlier. Okay.
I sent mine directly to Devin. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, no. I, I, I just got confused when I opened up my chat window. Um, uh, George, would you, uh, or Devin, can you go to the chat? Copy and paste onto the document on the screen, George's, uh, uh, proposed amendment, and we're going to treat it just like we did with, uh, okay, there it is.
That'd be great. So the, the goal is, uh, to maintain the maximum of the 40% ELU. I think I pointed this out, which is just that, that there's, you know, removing that is, uh, it's, it's a safeguard so that we, we try to maintain diversity of housing. And right now that diversity of housing, um, section is not, um, entirely prescriptive as to the balance that it's trying to achieve. And so I would, um, uh, basically make this motion to either keep what we have or I, I'm open to something different from the perspective of staff. I just want to make sure that it's, we're, we're trying to achieve the diversity of housing that is, um, the, the idea behind that, um, and consistent with the BBCP.
Are we asking Carl to respond to that?
Yeah, Carl could respond to that.
I think our recommendation is, um, we find that keeping the user view process for ELUs is counter to the goals of the project of trying to, um, streamline process, um, for housing. Um, so that's the reason why we recommended that, uh, user view not be required. It's just a added burden. Um, so I, we, we don't recommend it, but certainly up to the board.
But when you say you don't recommend it, I mean, are, are you concerned at all that ELUs being a profitable housing type? Um, being that we could see based on the language of what's in the diversity of housing? I mean, my, my concern is that we're going to get, we're going to get a, a bunch more ELU projects, um, which isn't really achieving a middle housing type, um, for Boulder. It's kind of more of the same, if not more of, more of the same of what we've been seeing as a planning board too.
I, I think our sense is that, you know, we have the, the in commuter issue where people can't, uh, live in the city, so they have to commute in. So by allowing more E, ELUs, that that furthers the goal of trying to give people opportunities, um, in the city, a place to live. So.
Kurt?
I'll just say that I strongly support the goal of achieving a diversity of housing, but it's not clear to me that we need to achieve a diversity of housing within each project. I think we need to have a diversity of, of housing across, you know, within areas of the city. And so I don't find this compelling.
Well, it's, it's in our, I mean, I guess my point is it, we, we, it's called out in our code now that we're requiring a diversity of housing in these projects.
Laura?
But, but isn't that, that section of the code that you called out, George, and that, um, Carl, uh, pulled up on the screen, that's for projects that go through site review, right? That's not for all projects in the city. And so the, changing this threshold would just say that fewer projects have to go through site review and then they don't have to meet those diversity criteria that are in the site review criteria. Is that, am I understanding that, Carl, or do I have some?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
And, and I'll say that I.
Could you walk through that a little bit? Cause I, I think that's a good point of clarity, Laura.
You want me to walk through it or do you want Carl?
No, no, Carl, Carl. It's like what Laura said in a different way.
I think if, if an ELU project is large enough, it, it likely will require site reviews. So I, I think our thinking is that, you know, the, the impacts that could be presented by a project of that size would be handled through site review and doesn't necessarily need to be, uh, have an additional use review on top of that. Um, if this requirement were removed, yeah, we might see some more by right, uh, ELU projects in the city. But again, they have to meet, you know, basic development standards like parking, landscaping, open space, you know, things like that.
Okay.
ML? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I could just finish my comment. Uh, I'm not super concerned about small ELU projects. I do think they provide a valuable housing type. I think there are a lot of people, um, singles, young people, older people who appreciate that housing type. I, I'm not sure that having to have a few single bedroom and, and two bedroom units in a same building with an ELU project makes a lot of sense. Um, I, I don't see the need to requirement. I don't see the need to single out ELUs as being a particularly uh, concerning type of housing. Um, I think if we start to see too many of them, then we can always a, adjust at that time. But, um, I, I'm not really concerned about this one.
Yeah, ML, I'm going to ask you to speak and go quickly because as I've been counting votes, I, I don't think this one's going to proceed, but go ahead and speak. Oh, you're still muted.
I was going to ask a, a broader, uh, question of this proposal, which is, does use by right, are there any thresholds for diversity of housing in projects? Now, outside of a, a trigger for, do we, do we say, I know we always say we want diversity of housing. Are there thresholds just in general out there? Or is this the only place we've ever had thresholds?
The other place where we have thresholds is actually the RMX two zone, but beyond that, uh, it would have to be through site review.
Um, okay, at this point, George, uh,
I'll withdraw it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, let's go to ML's. ML, you've.
So I have a, um, the, the, I'm looking at table 2.2 and it, it used to be, or it's proposed to be taken out, that in the BC two, any project that was, um, any site in the BBRC would require it to be. So my question is, why did that get taken out? Is, was there no value in it being retained, um?
Yeah, the, the reason that's in there is because there was, there were design guidelines that were created for BVRC sites in the past. And there was actually an urban renewal board that existed in Boulder. It was the Boulder Urban Renewal Authority Bureau.
Right.
And so the, the, the point was to put projects in front of bureau, um, through the site review process and. Um, through the site review process, and Bureau has not been meeting for. Ten plus fifteen plus years, so there actually were other. Zones where this requirement for any site to go through. Site review were removed from the code, so this is actually just a remnant. That we think this is a code cleanup, because there's no Bureau. To look at these projects anymore, so that's why we're recommending it.
So the B B R C um, guidelines are no longer, even though they. Are referenced in the twenty twenty. B B C P, they no longer.
No, they they still apply, but they would apply to a site review project, so if a project meets the the threshold.
Oh, in and of themselves, got it, in and of themselves, there wouldn't be a requirement.
Right.
Got it, okay, um, I don't need to uh, put this forward as a recommendation, thank you.
Okay, great. Progress, progress, okay, uh, Devon, uh, do, does any other board member have anything else? Um. Okay. All right. I I I'm I'm just in the in the name of transparency and clarity and everything else. Uh, I spent, uh, you know, Bill Holicky, a former planning board member and part of the development community. Uh, you know, sent us that note, and in trying to send us his email. And in trying to understand and clarify, I had conversations with Bill, and um. I I finally, late this afternoon, was like. Let's, you know. Be more specific, let's make this in in the language of uh, of of emotion, and so. The um, I think a couple of these might be uh, things that staff can say, oh, yeah, that's actually something we can. Just take care of, but. The first motion I'll speak to, motion one. Isn't, is in B C one and B C two zones, for property shown in appendix N. There will be an additional point five F A R bonus for residential use uses. Which will be into, in addition to the one point five F A R limit in the base code. So, the que- the first question I had was, what, what's appendix N? Where is appendix N? Um, and appendix N uh. Is in a prior ordinance, and and well, Carl, I should probably have Carl speak to this, but the idea is that appendix N calls out. Our community centers, Basemar, Table Mesa, uh, part of North Broadway, um, et cetera, and that. If we want to see projects similar to the diagonal where we're converting. Um, uh. Decrepit and. Uh, retail, that is vacant, et cetera, and large surface parking lots into housing. That um. Near na- near or in neighborhood centers, then the additional. Uh, point five F A R for residential uses. Would be allowed for projects, for for properties shown in appendix N. So, rather than forcing someone to actually. Go through the process of creating an ordinance like what was done for diagonal Plaza. If it was residential uses. In the neighborhood center. In appendix N, then you would be allowed the point five F A R bonus on top of the one point five limit in the base code. So Carl, do you want to speak to that, and did I get it wrong, or is that about right?
No, that's right, I mean, the appendix N was created to apply. To largely the shopping centers that are zoned B C, B C's kind of an odd zone because it applies to. Those neighborhood centers, but it also applies in some areas that are not. Shopping centers like East Whittier, you know, where there's like. Single family homes that have that zoning or out at fifty five in a rap, fifty fifth in our in Arapahoe. Different context, so they wanted to. Show those those shopping centers in appendix N.
Um. And, okay, so we're in agreement on 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 appendix N, what, what is your? Thinking about the validity of of this suggestion, and um. Uh, you know, un- unattended consequences or whatever.
Yeah, on this one, it's kind of the same as as what, you know, Kurt had suggested about allowing a bonus, so there's some concern that this hasn't. Been, you know, communicated through, you know, public channels, and and also just that. Getting near a two point O F A R. Are in some of these areas, which is like what we see downtown, may not. Be the scale that we think um, makes sense for those areas, so I have, I have reservations about that.
And hey, Carl, a question on that, so like, um, I'm just thinking of like the area planning process that took place by, took place by Alpine Balsam, where that's B C, right? Um, in that case, it relates to Mark's motion, would that, would that, um. Would his motion sort of override what was done in the area plan and and provide additional F A R on top of it, is that the way you read it?
I mean, yeah, if we change the zoning code, it it would, it would change that zone.
Kurt.
Well, I was just wondering if instead of specifying the specific point five F A R, as I had done in my recommendation. If we should leave it open, if there would be more support for leaving it open without specifying a particular number, but. Uh, asking staff to. To come up with some sort of a recommended number for additional F A R.
You wanna, Carl, do you have any, would would that be enough to make you feel better, or?
I I think similar to to that other. Motion, I think. Consider. A a a moderate bonus to the F A R to allow for flexibility in certain areas, I I think that makes sense.
Okay, I kind of like that language, but Laura, go ahead.
Uh, pardon me, I don't have Kurt's motion in front of me, is this already incorporated in what Kurt suggested, or this is a different zone?
Well, Kurt's, so, in fact, had had Kurt's move forward. Then the need for this one may not have been taken place at all, so this is similar to Kurt's. I uh, specifying some sort of F A R bonus, it could be a number, it could be a percentage. Or if we could, we could, as Carl suggested. Adopt language that says, uh. You know, staff, consider. Allowing an F A R bonus. In these zones, um. Uh. But so he was referring to Kurt's motion that that failed.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Kurt.
And Laura, just to respond, this is much more restrictive than what I was proposing, wh- what I was proposing would have applied to many more zones. This applies just to, as I read, just to B C one and B C two, and for B C one and B C two, only independent, those independents, and so much.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was just wondering if this fit under that umbrella, if it was already encompassed, but then Mark reminded me that that motion failed. So this would be an attempt to see if a more narrow motion could succeed, so could I suggest a wording change? Based on Carl's, so Devon, could you, after appendix N? Say. Uh, consider allowing. And additional. And then you can delete, there will be an additional point five, you can delete all that. Consider allowing an additional F A R bonus for residential uses. Um. As determined appropriate by staff. To provide flexibility. And I think Kurt, or sorry, that Carl had used the word modest, consider allowing a modest additional F A R bonus. Carl, is that about what you said off the top of your head, and would you propose any changes?
Uh, yeah, I thought that's what I said, or I think I said moderate.
Moderate, moderate. Thank you.
Well, I can, uh, I can certainly live with that, and I'm I'm. George, go ahead, and then I'll, I'll go ahead and make a.
Yeah, I mean, I I I, I'll I'll use Alpine Balsam area plan as an example, and diagonal for that matter, as an example, why. You you just can't do this without community input, this is. A disaster, I I I don't know why we would, why we even suggest. Overriding in the community on this, you know, area plans as 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 planning board, right, that's our tool. To, you know, work through these areas and design something cohesive in conjunction with the community and. And the planning area, et cetera, um, if we overlaid something like this, where now. There could be a bonus tacked on to an area plan that we just passed, that is a disaster. Um, and the reason why out, why why um. Diagonal was approved through that ordinance was because someone wanted a catalyst, and I get that, and and that was, that. That that went through a process, right? The right process for diagonal at some point is an area planning process. And the right process for these areas is an area planning process, and I I don't, I I just think we're. You're 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 layering on this bonus that the community will just get, I mean, crazed about, so I I. I I'd be very cautious about something like this, I I don't think it's necessary to achieve our goals, um. We got diagonal through because people, people, there was urgency because of a specific, to to Carl's point, it was a very specific. Um, thing, and if there are other specific things like that. Those things will develop on their own, um. And in the meantime, if we've got area planning processes that we do with all this community outreach, and all of a sudden, someone can just layer on a ten percent or twenty percent or fifty percent bonus. Um, I I just think we're asking for trouble from the community that 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 i- is irresponsible.
Uh, okay, I I I'd like to respond to that for a second, I think that, um, one. Uh, that the language being considered now, uh, is both indefinite and uses the modifier moderate. Two, uh, many of the properties shown in appendix N do not have, nor will they ever have. Uh, an area plan. Um, and three, I think that. Um, while we claim diagonal Plaza as a success, the. The guiding principle behind this project is simplification and facilitation of. Broader housing types in more places, and um, and simplification. Uh, of the process and requiring an ordinance. Uh, in any time we want to have, you know, a, uh, not just site review, not just use review, but an ordinance. Uh, that has to get passed to achieve some of our goals is, to me, that's the disaster, so. Uh, I'm gonna leave my comments there, and Laura.
Well, I'm wondering if there might be a tweak here that would help to. Um, alleviate it, maybe, probably not all, but maybe some of George's concern about areas that. Have gone through a rigorous area planning process, and and maybe, uh. For your consideration, Mark, um, you know, you made the point that not all of these areas have an area plan, perhaps we could say. For properties in B C one and B T two, B C two zones without an existing area plan.
Showing in appendix N.
Showing in appendix N, et cetera. And I don't know if that language makes sense, I would look to Carl to say, am I saying the right things to answer George, at least part of George's concern, or is there a different way to phrase it? Is it an area plan the right thing?
I mean, I I think we we've heard a lot of comments um, over the years that area planning for neighborhood centers would be a. A logical step. Here in Boulder, it's just they haven't been prioritized. Um, by our council, since there's been more of a focus on East Boulder sub community plan, but I I think. These neighborhood centers are opportunity areas for mixed use and more housing, so I think our suggestion is, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. To have area planning and then have your zoning. You know, shake out to. Implement those area plans, but again, that the timeline to do those area plans would be. Um, well into the future.
So. Um. Uh. I'm going, I I I'm going to suggest. Modifying my motion. To uh, exclude area plans as per Laura's, uh, so Laura, um, would you? Uh, so, in B C one and B C two zones for properties. Uh, shown in appendix N. That do not. That do not have, that do not fall under an area plan, is that, would that be the correct language, Carl?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, consider allowing, okay, so. I I just, uh, we're we're bumping up against timing, so I'm just gonna, uh. Read this as a motion, see if I get a second, and then we can take a quick vote. In B C, so I move. In B C one and B C two zones, for property shown in appendix N, that do not fall under an area plan. Consider allowing a moderate additional F A R bonus for residential uses as determined appropriate by staff to provide flexibility.
I will second.
Okay. We've had discussions, are there any final comments by anybody, or should we go to a vote? Seeing none. Uh, Kurt.
Yes.
Laura.
I'm gonna say no, because I think I heard Carl saying that the right thing to do would be to prioritize area planning. So I'm gonna say no.
And M L.
No.
Uh, George.
No.
Okay. All right. Um. I I'm go- I'm going to glance at these.
Um, sorry, really quickly, apologies, chair, make sure that you put your vote on the record as well.
I'm sorry, I voted yes, excuse me, yes.
Yeah, apologies, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no, no. Um, okay, so we're bumping up against the time limit here, and I would welcome. Um, uh, I'm gonna go down to motion four and 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 motion. Three and four, because they are things that may just be, uh, something Carl says, oh, yeah, so for instance, in in. Motion three, in an I G and I M, in table eight dash one. The six hundred square foot of required open space per unit. Uh, should be removed or replaced by the site wide open space requirements matching B C one and B C two. The, his, his point here, as as he explained it to me, and I I worked with the table, was that. The six hundred square foot is kind of a remnant that should have been deleted, and that the open space requirements. Uh, matching B C one and B C two. Accomplish the same thing, but when you have both. Then it's, it it becomes problematic. So, uh, Carl, would you? Comment on that?
Yeah, um. I I I I think that's the right logic, I I think for the industrial zones, I think the code is set up in a way where. It's trying to make sure that a residential project that's built. In in industrial zone has enough open space, they may not typically have as much open space as another. Project, um, I I don't know, I I could feel like I could go either way on this one. Um. I think it certainly would simplify the code if it just went to a a a solid percentage. Um, but but I I kind of feel like we need to do a little bit more. Analysis here. Cause I think this, it might be, make more sense to to be a little bit stricter on open space. In industrial, just because there isn't as much access to parks. In those areas.
Okay. I'm I'm, let's just go to motion four, and again, the clock's ticking here, so. In B T one on table two two, the com- concept and site review required threshold shall be raised to two acres. I think that should be, or. Two acres or fifty thousand square feet. Um. Yeah, my understanding, uh, was that. Um. Oh, the edits in this table got confusing, but. Is this making any sense to you, Carl, as to, um? I'm gonna try to find the page number here.
I I'm just seeing it on page two twenty three of four sixty six, so the the current, what's currently in the code is. Two acres or thirty thousand square feet. For B T one, so this would be changing it to two acres or fifty thousand square feet.
I guess my reaction to that is, um. I think when these thresholds were originally set up, there were certain zones that. Were envisioned to allow more intensity. So for instance, like B R one and B R two. So for instance, like B R one and B R two. Have three acres and fifty thousand square feet of floor area, because those are zones that. Have a higher F A R where they allow more development. Uh, B T one, I wouldn't say is in that same category because it's a transitional. Business zone. And I think in the past, when they applied B T zoning, it, it typically is along. Or doors where, you know, it might be a multimodal corridor, but nearby is single family. Residential, so it's supposed to serve as like a transition to that lower intensity. So. This, this would change the threshold to kind of the same as what you would see in a higher intensity. Zone. So that's, that's the implication I see with this change.
Okay. Unless I get like a big chorus of, I really want this, I'm going to drop both of those. And then just, oh, Kurt, go ahead.
Well, I would be interested in the previous one, motion three, if instead of saying. Be replaced by site wide open space requirements matching B C one and B C two. It just said be replaced by site wide open space requirements as deemed appropriate by staff, for example. If, uh, Carl, if, if you would be more comfortable with that.
Uh, yeah, I would.
All right. Then I, I like that. So, um. Uh, instead of matching B C two.
It would be as deemed appropriate by staff. By staff, yeah, great, thank you.
And I think just grammatically, you need to take out the comma so that it's clear that as deemed appropriate by staff applies to the site wide open space requirements. And not the whole clause. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, uh, going to move. In I G and I M in table eight, one. The six hundred square feet of required open space per unit will be removed. And be replaced by site wide open space requirements as deemed appropriate by staff.
I see.
Okay.
Can I just ask, Carl, do you still have hesitations about it as written?
Uh, no.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to call this question. Uh, Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Knowing that Carl's okay with it, yes.
George?
Uh, I'm a no, just because it's, it's, it's a little too specific for, for what I'm aware of, and I just need more time to absorb it. So for now, I'm a no.
And Mel?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. Okay. Uh, last one here. And so this last one, motion two. And I G and I M, the base F A R in table eight point two, we lowered to point three. And the residential bonus floor area will be raised to one point three and one point two respectively. For a total F A R of one point five, one point six and one point five respectively. So is commentary there? The, the idea here is that, and again, I, I, I could be getting this wrong and. Carl, jump in and help me out here, that the, um, uh, it is. You are. Increasing the bonus for residential in the zone. Um, while not, uh, losing. The percentage of industrial on the, uh, on the lower level, but you tell me. Uh, what you think of this one?
Yeah, this is something, so this is a suggestion made by, uh, Bill Holicky, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Um. It seems a little complicated as I read it right now, uh, but I think what he's saying is if we allow. A greater amount of residential. That that could incentivize residential, but also preservation of industrial. Uh, um, I guess my, my only concern with this is that lowering that the commercial limit. Um. Isn't something that we've communicated to property owners in that area. So I think we'd have to keep. The existing point five and point four. F A Rs for the non-residential. If, if the logic is just allowing more than just a one point O F A R, I, I'm. I'm comfortable with that, just because we already want the, the po- the policy for that area is to get more residential. In that area, but also preserve industrial. And it's also the fact that. We don't have an F A R limit in that area now. So allowing a, a little more residential, if, if, if Bill thinks that that creates. An incentive to, to do residential and preserve. Um, industrial or, or get R and D in there. This, this seems logical to me.
Okay, so what I heard was you wouldn't lower. The, um, the base F A R because having not discussed that with. And communicated that to the property owners. So. It would just, would it make sense in an, in I G and I M? The residential bonus floor area will be raised. To one point three and one point two respectively for a total F A R of. We're just, we, we, we don't, we don't need to, I don't even know. If we, the bonus floor area would raise to one point three and one point two respectively.
Yeah, it could be that, just you recommend that the residential F A R be increased above one point O.
Okay, I like, I, I like that. Um, so. Let's, uh, in I G and I M. Uh. Comma, so yeah, delete. Uh, yep. Okay, the residential. Bonus floor area will be raised. Uh, to. Greater than one point O. Um. And then. To greater than one point O. Do, do we need to say? Uh, uh. Upon staff's recommendation or upon, or just put a period at the end of one point O?
Are you, are you making it subject to community benefit at all, Mark? Are we just giving this away to the developers?
Well. What, right now, the, the one point O is, is still the subject to. Uh, is not subject to community benefit because it's not. Well, I'm asking Carl, Carl, what is the, uh, community benefit requirement in these two zones? To, um, uh. To have the, to, to get a residential bonus floor area.
There, there isn't any community benefit at this point. Um, we had suggested. A one point five F A R for I G and I M because it's in the same intensity module. As R H five and B C two, I think. And that they have the same proposed one point five. So that's why we applied it to that. Industrial area, the, the industrial zone right now doesn't have an F A R limit for residential. That's why I was saying in this case, I, I think. You know, you can probably allow more intensity in that area because it's a targeted area for residential and it does. Doesn't have established, you know, residential around it that could be impacted. So. That's why I was saying there, I'm, I'm less concerned about allowing more F A R here, if it makes sense to get that. You know, synergy between, you know, residential and non-residential. I think it's up to the board if you want to say, here's the cap and beyond this, you know, is community benefit. Being applicable.
Ca- Carl, I'm sorry, I'm really unclear with what you just said. So the F A R things that Mark is suggesting in here. Are you saying there's no F A R now? So what, how does that, how does that compute versus what he's, what, what's being said here?
Well, we're, we're suggesting in this ordinance that an F A R be applied. To I G and I M. And again, because we lumped it in, into the same in- intensity module. As some other zones that have that same limit. When we look at the code today. There's an F A R limit on non-residential, but there is no F A R limit on residential. So this effectively, you know, kind of makes it more restrict- restrictive for residential. It doesn't necessarily have to be restrictive for residential.
Well, or, or does this, does this modify, sorry, does this modify basically, i- i- is, is Mark's thing saying there's a, there's, there's the F A R for the site? And then there's a bonus F A R for residential on top of that? Is that, is that how you're interpreting this?
Yeah.
You know what? I don't understand the motion I'm making well enough to really advocate for it. So unless someone else wants to take this up, I'm going to withdraw it. Kurt?
I'm not going to take it up because I don't understand it well either, but I would certainly encourage staff to think about. It, my, my understanding is currently there's no restriction on the amount of residential you can put. They're proposing to reduce it to a one point O F A R, which is. A pretty significant restriction over what is current, there, there is currently. And this would. Not restricted as much. So I would just encourage staff to think about whether. You would want to introduce something like this when it goes to council.
And we can certainly summarize, you know, this discussion, even if it's not in a motion, we could say the board discussed this topic.
Okay. All right. Fine, uh, let's, yep. So we have, um.
Could I ask Devon to group the motions that passed and the motions that failed? So that we know when we approve the whole motion, which things we're approving with it. Take the ones that failed maybe and move them to the bottom. I think it matters less who made the amendment and it, at this point, and it matters more. Uh, which ones passed? Sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to, I'm just trying to.
No, I, 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 believe me, it's a, we're, we're. Two minutes past our deadline and we still have to, uh, read and, and pass. The main motion with the, uh, with the amendments. So, um. And we're very close. So Devon's working furiously here. Great work.
So are we ready for you to read it as Chair, the whole, the whole package?
Yep. Okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor, the main motion with the passed amendments. The main motion is, on a motion, oh, um, okay. Uh, planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance eighty-five ninety-nine. To amend title nine land use code, D R C nineteen eighty-one. Related to the site review process and intensity form and bulk. Use parking and subdivision standards concerning affordable and modest sized housing. And setting forth related details. Including. The following amendments. In I G and I M and table eight, one, the six hundred square foot of required open space per unit will be removed. And be replaced by site wide open space requirements as deemed appropriate by staff. Consider replacing units in table two, two, site review threshold table with floor area. Add a multiplier of fifteen hundred square feet per unit or as determined appropriate by staff. Consider in table eight, one, intensity standards, eliminating the minimum. Lot area for I S one, R M, R H five, B C, I M. B T two, I G and B R one zones and eliminating. The minimum lot area per dwelling unit for B T two zone. Okay, um, so. Uh, I believe that we had, uh, we moved and seconded on the main motion. We passed. The auxiliary motion, so now it's time to vote on the entire, uh, package. Uh. George?
Yeah.
Mel?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Okay. Don't run off just yet. Um, we've gone five minutes over and I want, uh, to offer, uh, the. Board members. Or staff, if you have matters of, that are really time sensitive tonight, um. Bring them up now, otherwise we can, we can carry on without. But if you have something you really need to talk about now, let's do it.
I have, I have three quick things, but I want to check in with Charles first and Laura.
I'm going to drop off, guys. Thanks, bye.
Okay.
It, it's real quick.
George, okay, all right, so hang on, George.
Go, go, go.
Nothing for me tonight.
Uh, n- number one, uh, you were sent a poll for an, a, a special meeting. Uh, we have now determined that that is not needed. So, uh, you can ignore that. Uh, we've determined the special meeting in September's not needed. Whether you filled out the poll or not. And Devon, if you can send an email to the full group, just reinforcing that, appreciate it. Uh, you also got a, a hold the date for the retreat on October twenty-fourth. So please, please, please. Make sure that that's on your calendar and let us know immediately if somehow that is a conflict for you, but the poll indicated you were all available. And then finally, uh, we've been asked to reinforce the boards and commissions survey that's been sent to all of you. Uh, it sounds like citywide, not just planning board. It's maybe been a little slow to respond to that. So please try to give that your attention from the clerk's office, I think. And that's it.
Okay, any matters from the board? Thank you, Brad. No matters from the board, okay. Um, I'm going to, I believe. We need a motion to adjourn, and so I will entertain that.
I move re-adjourn.
Second.
Okay, uh, then seeing no objection. I adjourn the meeting.
Thanks all.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you.